We'll begin the meeting with the plates of allegiance. Can you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Talk about a difference in two days, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we'll begin with the clerk's report.
You should have the minutes for our April 5 meeting.
Yep.
Your signature?
Yeah, I read them on the website. My pen's downstairs. What?
Do you need a pen?
Sure. I set three of them up there so I wouldn't need one, but now they're down there.
I'm gonna take it back from you.
Oh, you're gonna take it back? You want to make a motion to...
I move that we accept the minutes for the last meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, so signify.
Aye.
So vote. How you feeling, Clyde?
Up and down.
Up and down, yeah.
One minute, one way, one minute today.
Oh, you're not doing well. Okay, we don't have a treasurer's report, do we?
No, the treasurer's not here, but I just want to let you know that he is still working on warrants.
Okay, so we'll postpone that till later. Corrections Officer Approval, Doug Bloubel.
This is Mr. Bloubel. I have, looking for approval for one part-timer and two full timers right now. That still leaves us a whole or two. But for a part-time hiring for approval would be Kevin Viles. He's from Salem Township. He's a volunteer firefighter for the towns of Salem and Phillips.
That's with a V?
V.I.L.E.S., correct. He doesn't have a doc history, but he would like a chance, somebody to give him a chance. He is interested in part-time right now because he's not sure whether he's going to like the job, but he does want to learn some new skills.
See?
It would be the one for a part-time. Do you want to do these individually?
Yeah, that's usually how we do them individually.
Our gentleman here, United States Secretary of State, has hired a good time. And they care more than.
Okay, I second the motion. Okay, they moved and seconded that we accept Kevin Viles. All those in favor of that motion, so signify.
Aye.
Aye. So vote.
Okay, so for a full-time hire, we have two, I have two to present to you right now. One is Dakota Muma, M-U-M-M-A is the last name. He's from Farmington. He's a former captain of a high school football team. He's had some local jobs, but he's looking for a job that he can develop into a career, eventually into law enforcement. So another one that's, well, I've done background checks on everybody. Sometimes that alone is difficult.
Yeah.
Everybody has passed.
I know that young man. It's like, taught him. Okay, do you have, can't we do both at once?
Entirely.
Yeah, let's just do it.
I'd rather do one at a time, that's my...
Can we do both at once?
Yeah, that's fine. You just, just name both of them.
Okay, so the second one would be Zachary Brooks. He is a certified corrections officer since December of 2020. He's a firefighter and EMT for the United States Air Force from 2009 to 2012. Certification means firefighter one and two, intermediate EMT, hazmat tech, confined space rescue, which a lot of these were through the Air Force when he was in the Air Force. Couple of accommodation medals that he has gotten. And again, he is a certified corrections officer since 2020, so there would be a buyout on him.
Of?
Corrections institution that he...
Of how much, do you know?
Roughly $8,000.
$8,000.
That's something you can't...
Yeah. Dakota Muma and Zachary Brooks. I move that we hired Dakota Muma and Zachary Brooks as correction, full-time correction officers.
Secretary of Health, now then.
Okay, moved and seconded that we accept Dakota Muma and Zachary Brooks as full-time employees. All those in favor, so signify. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
I do just have one question, Doug. With these buyouts, right? So if he comes here, we have to buy out what's left of over there. What if, like, he leaves us not to go to another corrections place? Then you just eat it, you just have to eat it?
I can explain. It's tough, it comes down to...
Just like with law enforcement buyouts, they kind of stay with us for a little bit, and they're still within that time, five-year timeframe. We can take whatever is still allocated for his buyout and get it from the preceding agency, so. So for example, if you...
Oh, so if he left within five years, we could go back to the people with that $8,000?
Yeah, I mean, whatever we're buying him off of right now, say he stays with us a couple of years, so it goes down each year.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And so he goes, let's just, for example, Oxford County, and he's over there, we can charge Oxford County six...
No, no, I'm saying, what if he just says, you know, I don't know, I want to become something else? It's not a...
We're toast.
Yeah, that's what I was, no, I thought, but I kind of understood how that worked.
And we've had that happen a couple times, we have, and it's what it is.
No, okay. Signature. Okay? Oh, yeah, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four. This is this right here. Sign Expernet contract?
Yeah, it's a maintenance contact, contract for the county website. I think Vicki's already put it in the budget for the amount that they had proposed.
So do we put that out for bid annually, or is this something that we just accept for a three-year contract, four-year contract? What is it?
I haven't read the contract, I don't know.
It's a yearly renewal, as far as I know, as far as the maintenance.
Do we ever put it out for bid? No?
How much did the doctor ask for?
Was it $9?
$9.60?
Yeah, for the full maintenance.
$960?
Yeah.
Clyde?
$960, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that in-house or... Is that in-house or somewhere else?
It's Expernet, for them to maintain the website, for them to do other maintenance, not the stuff that I put on there and do. It's the back, the background stuff.
I understand that. Is it going to be somebody in-house or is it somebody outside of us?
Outside.
It's outside.
It's private?
Yes, it's outside. The actual company is Expernet.
They're across the road from the courthouse.
Okay.
We're as close to in-house as you can get. Yeah. That seems pretty good.
Right, they're over, right?
Yes. Right on Main Street.
Okay.
I move that we accept the maintenance contract for $960 with Expernet. I just made a motion, we accept it, Clyde.
You want to...
I just made a motion that we accept it.
Well, I'm worried. Is she going to get the sheriff's information in our website?
The sheriff.
Of his honor?
This isn't the same thing, right? Is this just for the courthouse?
This is our website, not the, this is our website, not the sheriff's department's website.
Oh, okay, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, they moved and seconded. Right, right. They moved and seconded, we sign a contract with Expernet for $960 annually?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion, so signify.
Aye.
Aye. So vote. Okay, now here we go. Okay, budget proposals. Times are approximate. So we're going to start with Franklin County, Furland Water. What's that?
We're going to do the executive sessions.
You want to do those first?
For the budget.
All right, let's begin with the third one.
On this one?
Yes. I move that we go into executive session one, MRSA 4056A, personal matter, confidential information.
Secretary of Health, now then.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, so signify. Aye. So vote, we're on executive session at 10:18.
Okay, I move that we...
Please, ma'am.
Okay. Starting today, that we make Heidi whole in terms of the flex dollars and the, us paying our share of the main state, right? That on July 1st, you got that?
Yep.
On July 1st, she goes to 41, being made whole. And then next year, we go to 428, being made whole. As of today, she's whole.
So July 1, say that again?
July 1, $41,000.
Okay.
And then next year's, the commitment next year to 428.
Okay.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
None.
You're all in favor of that motion, so signify.
Aye.
So vote. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
Okay.
We're going to send anybody out?
Everybody, if they want to.
Well, we're going to get to this one. We got another one, but...
Okay, I move that we go into executive session one, MRSA 4056A, personal matter, county administration. I move that we make the county, new county administrators' health insurance only 30 days instead of 60, the same as we did the DA insurance. Second that motion. Any discussion on that motion?
None.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, so signify. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so vote. All right. So I guess we don't have the treasurer's report yet, no?
Was she downstairs yet?
Yeah, she just got here just a little while ago.
Oh, did she?
I know, they're still working on the warrants.
Okay.
Yeah, they're almost finished.
Okay.
Do you know when, do you know when we'll have the revenues from the towns?
What do you mean by the revenue?
Okay, so, okay, so we've only got total estimated revenues here for about 800, well, 800,000, roughly, not quite. So the other revenues are coming from town, right?
Right. I haven't estimated those yet.
Okay.
I'll wait till we get at least our first.
Okay.
The first.
So you, now like, like, for instance, in Farmington, is that, like, has that solo farm been added to the, that kind of thing?
Actually, I am still waiting on Farmington's, who has backed the sheet, they have not sent it yet.
Well, according to what they're raising their town tax is, it's quite a lot higher.
I still have three counties that...
Is it, it's based on the, like, the valuations, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah. There's increased evaluations each, for each year.
You know, one increases and one decreases. J decreases, Farmington increases drastically on both sides. Pam, you want to wait until you get the warrants ready before you speak, or no?
I haven't, I haven't a chance to check them here, but I could, because I don't have any of them.
Yeah, okay, we'll wait. Okay, so we're going to move on with the budget proposal.
Pretty good, only five minutes late.
Pretty close. Franklin County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Hi, I'm here. Come on up. I'm Cory Willard with Franklin County Soil and Water District. We had sent in our annual proposed budget, as well as last year's profit and loss. We were asking for an $8,000 increase, which is $8,000 more than last year, $3,000 more than 2016.
This is in book.
I believe it's letter P, under number one.
There's no explanation for the increase, is there?
There is, if we attach letter, I'd like to let you know...
Under number one.
Okay, hang on a second, let me get that done. Oh, yes, right. So it's merely because you're going to charge more than Rosetta did?
It's merely because without Rosetta, Rosetta is actually my mother, so I've been kind of in the background of Farmington County Soil and Water District for 28 years as well.
Yeah?
Rosetta had asked for a $25,000 increase in 2016, which of course, at that time was denied. It's been at $20,000 now for the last five years. This is now the sixth year I'm asking for an $8,000 increase, based on the fact that due to COVID, the last three years, we haven't been able to employ anybody else, weren't able to get any volunteer help, which is going to take to kind of process this. We have lots of programs, and adults have cut expenses considerably. However, even with that, we're still at a loss in our budget.
I sold the vote once like that.
Yeah.
They didn't want to pay the $2,500, so I jacked it up to $3,000 and sold it. Maybe that's what we're doing with the budget, I don't know.
Can I see those two other papers you got below there?
Yeah, those two, yeah, those.
No, no, those, these. Where do I get those?
These pages.
Can I get some of these?
Yeah, I have them in the papers. Do you want, do you want to say your part? I can, I can get a print one for you.
Yeah, whatever we have. Thank you very much. Yeah, a couple of them.
If you want to say, it won't include the warrant.
That's, okay. Gives me a base or something to work with. I don't know, I don't know if we have any. I don't know if we do here either. I don't think it's on the program grant. Good, all right. They have the wrong one. Yes, yes, no, we have it. I was just looking at the budget.
It's kind of a small summary here.
It's a sheet, we have a summary of what's left, the funds, Clyde. The sheet, the sheet. But they wouldn't be included in it.
No, we don't, they're, they're not included on that one.
Expense summary. Okay, that's what we're waiting for right now, but it doesn't impact yours.
Are there any questions in regards to the budget or the cover letter that I presented? You know, there are programs that we no longer are able to perform, such as the Smart, like for Lake Smart. We used to receive a small fee for that, that we help towards our educational programs, such as Ag Day Affair, some of the other workshops that include our contractors, our CEOs, our towns, people that are updating their erosion control certifications. Some of these programs we still do, which is the workshops, but there's other programs that are not moved, like Lake Smart and Pondrick Shops at this time have been pursued. Lake Smart has been taken over by the Federal Hub, which is 30-mile hub located in town of Farmington.
How many people do you wear, secure? Where, where do you wear a hold-up workshop? How many show up?
Anywhere between 9 and 33. We've had to turn people away. 33 is the max holding capacity, depending on which place that we use to house our workshop, at which time we pay for some of the housing. Lately, I've been able to use the municipal building, which can house up to 25 participants. But we also pay for our hosts that actually do the representations of the erosion control and the septic courses. So there are fees that are incurred with that.
And you collect those fees?
We collect, we do collect fees.
You check, is that free?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. And, um, so we want to record, but I should put it together. Maybe it's not really... Keep going, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I think you should add, add up and do now.
The workshops at the current rate are adults.
Increase, yeah.
They include contractors, they include CEOs, and they include people that work for various towns. We cover Franklin County and all of their towns. We also allow other towns to participate in our plans.
What do you, what do you want for the program for the town?
Sure.
You, you say, what do we, we get that highway and program, no?
Yes, yes. It's erosion workshop classes, as well as septic system classes. The erosion classes are the ones that the gentlemen, or females, I've had females in my class, need to take those and certify. They have to have enough credits to continue to work along the highways, as well as shoreline zoning. There's heavy fines if they don't have their certifications up, and DEP shows up on site with no certifications. So I have contractors that I reach out to, they have either expiring, soon to expire, or expired certificates. And those are the ones that I reach out to to try to get into our workshops. The more capable that we get in these erosion classes, it also prevents not just erosion from our roadsides, it prevents the phosphorus that drains into our lakes and our streams, which cause fish kill, it causes pollution, it causes allergies. So it's the beginning, and it's the preventative measures that we need in place in order to prevent our lakes and our streams turning into what China Lake did. And if anybody's been to China Lake, you'll know what I mean.
Do you get a good response from the town in Franklin County? 41?
I, I'm not understanding. I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
Do you get a good response from the town in Franklin County?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And if, and if, I'm worried.
Anything else?
No.
You want to make a motion, or that we...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that we move it to 26,000, which is a little over an 8% increase, which is what inflation is. 26 instead of the 28?
No, it's still 31, right?
Yeah, total. Contractive services, soil and water.
The request is 31.7, right?
Request is 28,000.
28, yeah, it's just a...
Not the short end, but 28.
Yeah, this appears, all of them.
We had, we had a $29,000 loss last year.
This is double-sided.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Double-sided.
Yeah, okay, good.
Obviously, we're not asking for you guys to fund a loss, but it is, it's a big part.
Yeah, 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 okay, so, let's see here what we got.
Did you hear the $29,000 loss last year?
Yes, sir.
How, how do we get the money with the $29,000 loss?
That has to come out of our investment.
Oh, you said should be back today, didn't you?
We have an investment, non-profit investment, that isn't touched. That investment is now tied up and cannot be touched, I believe, for five or more years. So it's not available to us. We are working on what we have for our budget now.
So you, you had to pay for 29,000, that's right.
The...
You had to pay for 29,000.
No, we're not in debt 29,000, it's a $29,000 loss last year. When you look at the income and the expenses, it's a $29,000 loss.
Yeah. Well, you gotta pay that, right?
Right, you're right, that comes, that is pulled from our investment before our investment was tied up. Our treasurer has moved the investment. So the $29,000 was moved to the funding account for our expenses, and then the remaining funds were tied up into investments.
And then we give, okay, because of the COVID. All right. Yeah, that is, that's...
I'm trying to explain it, so there's two separate accounts. There's our active expense and income account, and then there's an investment account that has certain allotted times that it can be touched. So in five years, if we had to touch the investment account, we could. However, keep in mind that our investment account, right at the present rate, due to the market and how it varies, has been losing $1,200 per month.
It must have gone up pretty hard though earlier, right?
That, that's what it's hitting right now, it's $1,200 loss per month.
Yeah. All right, I move that we move 20,000 to 24,000.
I'll second that.
How much, 24?
24.
Second, okay, I'll hold on.
Okay. You have two seconds. 24,000. Yeah?
You seconded it.
Yeah, I, I did.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, so signify.
Aye.
Aye. So vote, 24.
Thank you, Franklin County Soil and Water, appreciate your support and...
Thank you. Okay. Extension. Who's the fireman? This is...
Miltonson, please.
Hey, Mel.
President of Franklin County Extension Association. I'm here today, I presume that you all have a copy?
Extension is under all.
They know. So what, how does the Franklin County firemen fit into the other one? Because that's on this...
It's a program grant.
Oh, so that just stays?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
That ensures every firefighter.
Clyde, the extension is under all.
All.
Yes, all.
I'm here again, on behalf of Franklin County Extension Association, to present our budget request of $62,539 for the fiscal year 2023. The attachments that you have been given will show you how our funds were spent, and how we have another attachment telling you what our justifications are for our 23 budget. Not sure what else you want from me to have information in front of you.
Yeah, I see your increase is basically for wages.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Clyde?
I have four other questions. Franklin County, you're on my side here. One other question. And yes. Everybody even going up?
Yes, it is. That's a 25. Anybody have any questions, Clyde, other than everybody's going up? Okay, all right, I move that we...
60, I would go with 60, now.
You go to how far? 60. Five oh, 60, 60?
Yes. And it's an increase.
I guess it's an increase.
Great, I'm, oh, I'm going to 60.
I move that we, I'll go 55.
Do what?
55. 55.
55?
55, 5,000 less than you, Clyde.
Second vote, 55.
Did you second that? Yes, I did. Okay. Any further discussion? Motion now is 55. All those in favor of 55? All those in favor of 55, so signify.
Aye.
55.
Hold on a second, if you're 55.
Got it. Thank you, sir. EMA. Tim, come on out.
I saw him waiting on 1:20.
EMA is under letter C. C.
This is all red.
He's coming up?
There's a lot of red. Jail. Yeah, there should be a pay.
All right, yeah, okay, I got it. Yeah, see it? Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yep, we're ready for you.
This one here too.
Next slide.
They don't need to be.
Couple hundred there.
They still get a couple of it. You never gotten it ready, though. They're using tax payer money.
Well, you know.
It goes in, they get it back, but get taxed or something. You don't need to be.
Yeah. We got 40 left here.
He's coming.
So this is what's, even with all the red here, this is what's left, right?
Yeah, we're in a hole in the red.
No, no, but at the top, it's going to take all that. And then that's that, right? Is that how that works?
Yes.
So even if you've got red, unless it's red up here, right?
Yep, when you first come to that department...
Oh, wait a second.
At the very top, which shows balance of everything.
Is it, is that in the gray one? So is what we have left, this number or that number?
Who are you looking at?
I don't know, any of them.
It's on the payroll.
And yes, this is correct.
Which, the red?
The commissioner's budget is in red.
Okay, so that's not, these numbers aren't what they, those aren't what we think they are. See, that is, well, that's actually more.
Yeah. Okay, got it, got it. They got all kinds of money. Commissioner is not because of the expenses.
This one's pretty big here. Well, this is ours. No, can you get...
Yeah.
And then that one's actually...
Hi, Tim.
Morning, gentlemen.
And he is...
So the emergency management budget. Contractual personnel services. I think Vicki has calculated and adjusted those.
Yep. I actually put in for all non-union employees, why is that increase?
Under C.
In the payroll portion of it.
It's under C, Clyde.
And that's... It's some money you're... I'll get it back here. No, that's yours.
Okay, um, I think each one of you have a breakdown. May I read your requests and changes?
Is that one in the book?
No. No. I miss it a lot. Most of the time, because the end house here.
So, um...
Thank you. You have it? You have this? The breakdown?
No, no. I'm all right about that. Yeah.
Should be right after the actual...
No, don't worry about it.
Budget.
Yeah, I don't... Okay, Tim, go ahead. We can...
Oh, yeah, true.
Okay, so all the control ones that have had some changes. First one is tower radio limits, 4017. We increased decided by $2,000. Equipment is getting over and the cost of repairing and the parts, just like everything else is going up. We had a power supply failure on our repeater in Weld. And as you can see in the description, the cost of $1,300 just to replace and repair the power supply. So that was one of the reasons that we have increased that by $2,000. Vehicle maintenance, they drop, which is pretty much our expenditure in the process of purchasing a new vehicle. The cavalry utilities, leases. We've increased from 23,500 to 26,000. The leases. The Eastland lease is based on the CPI. Every two years, the Sugarloaf lease goes up by 5% per year. And the Kitty lease goes up by 3% per year. And also, as you know, the cost of utilities is increasing. So that, we took that into account. Right now, with the current increases that we have this year, we figured it would take cost a little over 24,000. And so we've asked for 26,000. The unknown increases within the upcoming year. Office supplies, this is a red area that we've increased from 500 to 800. We're hoping to have a, at some point, we can position still to have somebody new coming on. So this would help with any materials available for operations.
So you're saying with these office supplies, you went up from 500 to 800? So we're creating more paperwork even with all the computers? And we're supposed to be better off with...
I don't know, it's just paper.
It's paper, it's also supplies.
To run the copias?
Office and to outfit the equipment.
It would be ergonomic stuff too, if you needed support and stuff like that for your workstation. So some of that would be in under the office supplies.
Thank you. Continue.
Okay. The other increase was equipment reserve line. Hotel add 1,000, we increased it to five, another 500 to 1,500. It was just another one of those that we don't have any control over. The cost of everything, as you folks know, is skyrocketing. And actually, we've stopped talking about any type of radio or computer or technical equipment, so... And then the copier lease decreased because now we own the copier and we've decreased it from 1,700 to 800.
Is it just for maintenance?
And that's for maintenance.
So this will be the first year we...
Yes.
Okay, so that's, yeah, okay.
Before that, we had to pay a lease...
No, but I mean, that's just, we're going to see if that works for a year.
Yes.
Okay. So you're looking for 204, 28? 200,000, 28 dollars. 200,000, 204,000 and 28 dollars there.
Yes. The only thing that I would say is, as you gentlemen go through this budget process, you'll see some wage adjustment requests throughout the budget process.
Those aren't figured in?
They are figured into this, but I'm just making this statement. And I hope as you go through the whole process, that you keep the non-union employees in mind as you're making these wage salary decisions.
And these are based on...
During the budget process.
These are based on 5%, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So you've also got left in your budget like 49,975, 79?
The wages?
No, no, just in your budget.
Yes, overall budget.
In your overall budget, you still have about $49,000. Little over, almost 50. Is that accurate? I'm just starting to find out, Zach.
Yes.
Yes, 49,975.
49, almost 50 grand.
Okay, would you be okay if it was a straight 200,000 and you just take the other four out of that? And the only one I'm worried a little bit about, I think, and you probably are as well, is that, is the utilities piece. Is that going to be enough?
That utilities is a non-no.
Non-no.
Right. That doesn't, but boy, if I look at my power bill, I'm like, that's not going to...
But you have 50,000 left, that's what he's...
Well, no, he'll have about 46,000 left. I guess, I guess what I would say is, $200,000, you take less that. And if the utilities is a huge problem, we'll just have to re-address it. Does that sound fair? Does that sound fair? Because that's, I mean, that's what I'm looking at. I don't know exactly what, I mean, I am... We got my power bill and what the hell happened?
Yeah.
Apparently, when you link your electricity to the price of fuel and the fuel goes up, it's a problem. Who knew?
Yeah, that's why we didn't sign with SOA.
Yeah.
You didn't know?
All right. So I move that we give them $200,000 and they can get the rest of the four there from that. And if we have problems with that, we'll just, you know, re-address it.
And then also, as you'll see on the revenue side of it, again, we're estimating about $60,000 on the revenue side for EMA this year.
Good.
So I guess my issue is, I think you really should take it from a certain category. I mean...
Oh, okay, no, I got you, I got you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. What about, what if we, you've got, you've got, okay, so if I'm remembering, were you part of getting a new vehicle too from those COVID money?
No.
No, no, yours, yeah, because you needed it. Yeah, you couldn't get the hybrid, okay. No, I couldn't, I didn't, I couldn't remember that, so... You have to take it from somewhere. So what are you going to take?
And just to let you know, these totals are, the remainder in the budget is as of today. And you still got a little over two months to of expenses.
You mean, so that could be, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Got you, got you.
But he should know, Tim should know if anything's coming out.
Is there any big thing coming up?
Yeah.
What?
Under the office supply budget.
Yeah.
We'll be putting a new floor in in our office.
What's that's going to be?
And that's going to be around $21,000.
Oh, 21, okay, that's not too much.
Are we going to wait until we do the inspection on that floor or not? About the asbestos?
There's no asbestos in that. That was abandoned a few years ago when they had a fight.
Okay. Okay, so that's, okay, so you're going to, but that becomes, ah, so you just have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, I think you could handle it.
No, I'm just figuring how I, she thinks that rather than just say 200,000 that we take it from a certain place, right?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, you're just giving, you're just giving me a flat figure.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got you, I got you.
I guess I can sit down with Tim and we can figure out where to take it.
Where to take it?
Maybe I can help you out.
Oh, that'd be greatly appreciated.
But I don't... I'm going to say, whereas we're getting a new vehicle this year...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We could zero that 5,000 for this year. But I don't want to, I want to make sure it's not...
Doesn't get removed.
Permanently.
So aren't you just...
So why don't we just take...
To four?
No, no, no.
So you're talking capital expenses.
Right, you'd want to reduce it 4,028 dollars.
Yeah.
To leave the...
That's what I meant.
Yes, you want to...
I'm trying to think, reduce it 4,000 dollars?
No. Yeah. Reduce it to $1,000 and...
Whatever it is. Not quite a thousand.
Leave a thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that'll, then you're like 28 dollars short, however that works. And you're going to get 28 in somewhere else, 28 dollars in somewhere else.
Yeah, I don't think we need...
I'm telling you.
I think that would pass my, I'll second that motion.
All right, I move that we, yeah, $200,000 to the EMA.
Any further discussion, Clyde?
I don't have your sheet that you're dropping.
Oh, he doesn't have the, he doesn't have the expense sheet.
You mean this one, Clyde?
The one that is...
Okay, so what this one, yeah, this one right here says that they've got 40, almost 49,975, 79 cents, almost 50,000 they have still. So we're just looking at giving them 200,000 this year. And the way they're going to cover that, because they got the new vehicle, is just take, just put 1,000 this year on the vehicle request. And that keeps it at 200,000 rather than 204,028.
You're hoping that, I'm sorry, Clyde, you're hoping the top figure on it, and he asked for...
He asked for 204,000 dollars and 28. I've made a motion for 200,000. And the way we've got it to that is on the vehicle request, because we've got a new vehicle, we're just going to take 4,000 off that and leave it at 1,000.
I didn't understand, I didn't understand, Clyde.
I was wondering, can I get a vehicle, can?
Yes.
You can get any vehicle?
Yes, yes, Juan.
Okay.
So we're going to reduce that line item, Clyde? The vehicle line item from 5,000 to 1,000 for this year.
Right. Anything else?
That's it. That's it, that brings it down to 200,000.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Okay?
So you're still...
Yes, Juan, I am.
So it's still 28 dollars off?
That's what I said, you laughed when I mentioned, yeah.
I don't know where you want to take it from, Tim. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we're going to, that's what I was telling you.
I'll sit down with Tim, we'll figure it out.
All right.
All right.
So 28 dollars for vehicle replacement.
Yeah. We set?
72. 972 for vehicle replacement.
I think covers that.
We'll figure it out.
All right, all those in favor of that motion for 200,000? Aye?
Yep.
If you can't find the 28, let me know, I'll take it in.
I'll just say I'll take it out of my pocket.
Yeah.
We'll think of, we'll go outside, think of a, uh...
Think up a collection, so...
Okay, you want those notes back?
Sure, thank you. I'll make sure you get them.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, dispatch.
Dispatch, so you have any explanation for...
Dispatch is letter M.
It's not L? L?
Or is it L?
L or M?
L.
M? Communications. This, oh, here it is. Do I have that explanation? I do?
No, you do. Yes, I have it.
Next year, we ought to follow your report. Take them in that order.
It's easier? No.
Yeah, instead of flipping back and forth?
Yeah, it would make it easier for a slow people.
That was, that was my fault, I asked you.
But no, sometimes it's a...
On the communications. Okay. I think I'm ready then.
Are you all set, Clyde?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking here. Okay, uh, under the communications, ten eighty is the patent number. As you fortunately know, this carries the personnel services and benefits, we're in the middle of contract negotiations, so that, I imagine, remains to be seen.
Unfortunately.
Um, under contractual services, four thousand, starting off in four three oh six, electricity, here we go again, uh, we've updated ninety-five hundred to twelve thousand. And that, this is due again to the embassy.
Yeah, no, no, I know.
Forty-three fifteen, cell phones, we increased this line by seven hundred, uh, we currently have a budget for one cellphone for the dispatch center, and, uh, we'd like to add two more cellphones for the supervisors, because they are on call, and, uh, they do take, uh, business-related calls, uh, not just from the dispatch center, but also from the agencies they serve, in their home and after their hours, so we increased that, uh.
No.
Seven hundred dollars from fourteen hundred to twenty-one.
Okay, I got it, I think I made, I think I see him, no, no, that's right, that's right, okay, I got it.
Clyde, you all set on that?
Yeah.
Telephone, uh, we received a north from state of Maine, uh, this has been increased from sixteen hundred to thirty-six hundred and sixty dollars. They indicated they've not had an increase in this service for many years, and they're doing a statewide update on us, so it's another, we don't really have any control. The next increase would be the building repair, and we increased that a thousand dollars from two thousand to three thousand, and I should do the increase in materials, labor, and anything associated with this type of building, and we'll have to do what we can, so.
Is that the rug that you're speaking about, came out of last year's budget or this year's budget?
Yeah.
Of two thousand?
Twenty, I think it's a twenty-one, wasn't it?
So you're gonna be sure.
You're gonna put some flooring down there or something?
No, that, that's in our office.
That's the EMA.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, good, good, got you, yeah.
Already?
How old is that building?
No, 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 the floor got discussed just for the EMA office, there was.
Not, not these guys.
The building, communications building is eleven, almost twelve years old.
It was finished in.
It was finished in two thousand twelve, may occupy in two thousand thirteen.
I know, I was on the budget committee then. Okay.
The only other one that's changed is the patent lot drainage unit, that went from ten thousand to zero, uh, every year, I think, the jail, and the dispatch, and the sheriff's office had set ten thousand dollars aside in reserve. And I believe the reserve right now is sixty thousand dollars, which I think you folks are gonna take that plus some Covid funds and.
Fix the problem.
Up there.
You believe that fund?
You mean we're gonna patch the hole rather than bailing it out?
I hope, I imagine it gets fixed.
Well, whatever, you know.
Only build the drag strip.
Fix the hole in the boat, get in a bigger bucket, yeah. No, that's good, so.
That's, that's all the highlights on that, unless you have other questions. Pretty much everything else has remained unchanged.
And as you, as you can see too, in the, uh, actual personnel services, uh, and benefits, I did esti, did, I put an estimate of a, of an increase in there for the FY twenty-three budget. For the dispatches, cause we're in negotiations, but I did a, kind of an estimated increase, just to kind of give you a figure of what, what it might be.
So we just have to settle for less than that?
Right.
Okay.
Clyde, do you have any questions on the communications budget?
No.
Okay.
It's about an eight thousand dollar increase. I'm not so sure most of that will be, in the way it sounds, the increase.
So I'm coming up with a difference of, oh, no, I did it wrong, sorry. So it's, that's one million, thirty-two thousand, one seventy-eight is the total budget.
Yeah.
So that would no changes.
Yeah, that's what, not an idea.
Thirty-two thousand.
One, one million, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
So we have a motion?
I make a motion, they'll repair the communication budget, so one minute, thirty-two dollars. One minute, thirty-two thousand, this, how many can you go to that?
Thirty. You, you're gonna have it as written?
As written.
Just say as written.
One seventy-eight, yeah, one zero two, one seventy-eight, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Hundred and thirty-two, what made it thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
So the, the, the salary stuff is based on, is based on five percent, right?
No.
Okay.
That's just the non-union.
Anti-union.
Yeah, okay, so what's the, what's the dispatching, is, what's the salary increase, nothing's being figured in?
That hasn't been decided, if that's still.
No, no, so, but, okay, so the personnel.
I didn't, I didn't, I had put an increase in there.
Of how much?
About fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent?
Per dispatcher.
Is that a total piece or just per person?
That, that's for total, for all dispatchers.
Okay, so when I look at nine eleven and then nine five five, that's, you've put a fifteen percent in there?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking of. So that's a.
Well, you, you gotta figure, I put.
It's a fifteen percent of the total, right?
No, under thirty thirty-nine, where it says dispatchers, I added, I did an increase of fifteen percent.
Okay.
So then that affects your FICR, your.
Right.
Main, main PERS and your.
So that's a fifteen percent total?
No.
It's, yeah.
Undispatched, your total's gonna be a lot more, I mean, once you add in your M PERS and.
Yeah, th- those are down here though, right?
Right, but it's still included in the personnel services of the budget.
Right, okay, so, so when I'm looking up at the top one, right?
Mm-hmm.
In twenty twenty, with nine hundred and eleven, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, right, nine, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and eleven thousand, right, and then nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, right? So that is a fifteen percent increase. That's what it's telling me.
Yeah, right around there.
Okay, so, okay, now that's not, now that's based on, um, how much, how much of the individual, is there any individual wage increases in this?
Yeah, I guess.
Maybe non-union or?
Yeah, okay, dispatches. Dispatches have their own contract, right?
The communications director is non-union.
Okay. So that would be the only, and the, and how much are we figuring for that?
For all non-union, I did five percent.
Okay, that, that's, that's, okay, that's what I was wanting to, cause the other part was already contractually agreed to, right?
Not yet, my negotiation.
Yeah, okay.
But I just wanted to kind of give a.
Okay, what are we putting down for that?
Well, we can't discuss that.
Okay, you're right. Is it somewhere in the ballpark where it's supposed to be?
Well, no.
So, so this could balloon even more?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um.
It could.
Well, that's always nice to hear, um.
But if we don't hire a, a manager, we keep that budget down, that line item, and just make Tim work out.
Well, he's retiring. You've already driven him out.
He's got a month and a half.
Jesus, it makes you wonder on that one. So this is the one down here that would be the problem, right?
Yeah, the one over there.
The thirty thirty-nine, that's the one we don't know where we are yet, we can't talk about.
Right, correct.
All right, I'll, I'll second Clyde's on this one, till we get that figured out.
Any further discussion on their motion? All in favor of that motion, so signify?
Y'all.
Y'all. Three y'all's.
Okay, I got one more, I need to show me. While I'm standing right here.
What do you got?
Plankton County Fire Association.
Is that the?
Under program grants.
Is it?
That's that thirty, it's that one, thirty-seven hundred, is that what it is?
Yeah.
From earlier, that's that one I was asking about earlier?
Yes.
On the P, right?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
It's on the P.
Yeah.
That's to ensure the.
Yeah, no, I know.
All the fire departments.
I move that we do that thirty-seven hundred. There we go, yeah.
The motion is for thirty-seven hundred, Clyde.
Yeah.
So you second that?
Yeah, it's on the letter P.
P, on, yeah. Under program grants. It hasn't changed in, how many years, Tim? Okay, good, been moved in secondary? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Got it.
Thank you.
Hey, have a good day.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
What's next here, or two, he's, okay, so we're down to, hey, we're ahead of schedule now.
Next is district.
District attorneys.
District attorney, who's the?
He's not here.
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
Sarah, do you know if anybody's coming through the A's office?
I think Sarah's gonna be here.
She's gonna come in?
Dee.
I don't have a phone with that.
Did you send me an agenda with the? She was on it, yeah, she was on with everybody else.
If they don't want their money.
District attorney, Dee.
Okay, what do we got here?
Is that that five percent on the item three thousand? There's one from three twenty-one to three forty-two, twenty-one thousand dollar difference?
Which, which line item are we looking at?
Three thousand.
You mean it went from, uh, twenty-two, two twenty-one to two fifty-four?
Sarah would have an explanation.
Okay.
So, under.
I mean this one.
Yeah.
Uh, are you talking three zero zero three?
Yes.
Yes, so, uh, there should be an explanation sheet, is there a sheet in your book, an explanation behind the budget?
No.
I only had an issue printed out, and I didn't know.
No.
May I get it?
Not in mine. Okay.
So they asked, shall I do it?
Is it okay if I use the bathroom for a minute while we wait?
Yeah, sure.
Five minute break? Okay.
Sarah's on her way, she'll be here in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Is this Neil McLean, is he supposedly the, the new district attorney?
Isn't this the same thing as this one?
Looks like it to me.
This half. Yeah, he's on.
He's not.
So does anybody know what's going on here?
He was, he was.
He's the one that resigned?
No, he's on the ballot.
Oh, so he hasn't been elected?
So Andy Robinson left.
Yes, I know.
And Andy.
And the other guy quit. They said the other guy quit after.
He is at the end of the month.
Okay, so he.
I don't know if he's coming over with Sarah right now, she said he'll be over, so I don't know.
Okay.
All right. What if we move to the county commissioners, while that's going on, can we do that?
Yeah.
Move along?
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure. All right.
Absolutely.
Okay, county commissioner, where are we at here, I don't know, do we're at E.
So, if you see, in the payroll portion, you'll see under the county administrator, um, salary, so, what we had discussed previously with the county administrator, her total salary, uh, two-thirds would come from the county and one-third from the two. So, the fifty thousand, eight twenty-one, uh, is the two-thirds.
But that is, um, okay, so this last year, right? We, we were paying you and someone we can't talk about, um, and what was the total left?
Well, if you look, look on the expense sheet, you'll see.
So where are you guys at on that?
It's on the ten twenty.
Ten twenty. What do you mean, on this, you mean on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
You'll actually see that, that the commissioner's budget is, uh, actually in the red.
Yeah, I saw that.
Which, which we knew it would be because of, of, uh, legal services, and also you'll see under.
Oh, that's right.
AA, uh, that's where most of that comes from.
Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, so, yeah, attorney fees.
And across the attorney fees, where's.
Sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, good God. Those, that's just to the attorneys?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so that's not part of any, any other?
It's all, all, all attorney services.
Okay. Um, so we're looking at. Commissioner.
We went ahead with another budget, so.
So we're next.
You have your seat, yeah.
So I kept it at twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think this is the first year since I've been here that we've ever been.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's understandable, so, um.
Under same circumstances.
Yeah. We hope that we still.
And I also did.
Yeah, alright, I.
So under the four thousands, I also added in meals and lodging. I don't know if there's going to be a convention this year, but I didn't know if the new county administrator would.
Go to that.
Would like to go to that, or, or any other types of training.
Yeah.
Can you hear alright, Clyde?
What?
Can you hear okay?
I, I guess my, my question, I guess my question is that when we lose wonderfully you. And the administrator's brought up to speed, right? We will have in effect been taking two jobs and making them one, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what were the two jobs paying? Total versus the one job? We, with her, it's like seventy-seven, is that it, or seventy-three? Yeah, seventy-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and what did you and someone else make?
Then with the increase, if you're thinking about the new budget, you're adding five percent to that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we knew that.
Yeah.
So, but what I'm saying is, what were the two salaries that are being replaced? What did those add up to? So it's not, that's not here?
It's, it's on here, I mean, but it's all included in one.
Oh, it's inclu, is it included in the payroll, is that it?
Correct, yes. Yeah. If you look under your expense sheet, under three zero zero eight.
Okay, there we.
That's what was budgeted and, and.
And we spent forty there, that's that one, right?
So five, yes. And, and that's where my current salary is.
Yeah, no, no, got it, got it.
And the other part-time clerical, that's up at the top.
Yes.
Three thousand six. So if you added those two together? You'd have that number that Lance is looking for?
Yep, that would include, that would include, um, Mary's salary.
No, that's not one.
So that would be forty-seven.
That's not one.
And not?
I'm looking for someone's salary that we can't talk about.
Oh. Gotcha.
Well, if you see what the, what the actual budgeted amount was for this current fiscal year.
Right.
That was, that was a portion of it, but a lot of it came from the two.
Anyway, I guess my, let me break it down even simpler. Is the hiring of this new person to eventually replace two people? It actually saves us money in the end, if I wasn't mistaken, right?
Yes, it would.
Yeah, that's, and do you, yeah, okay.
Yes.
That was, and that's reflected in this?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that actually replaces three people in the future.
Yes, potentially, yeah, we'll talk about that later.
Yes.
Yep.
That's the reason we hired this person with those qualifications.
So, okay, 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 okay. So we're down about, just three hundred and forty-four bucks.
And you'll, you'll see that I increased the cell phone, it's for two cell phones, one would be for the new county administrator. And also the, uh, the phone for, for the main office. That, that's being used for private purposes. Not necessarily just private, but for.
Yeah.
To keep conversations private.
Yeah, right. You're gonna have to go into save.
Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion on this one. But I'm gonna make a motion to increase it to two thirty-five, straight across. Two hundred, two hundred and thirty-five thousand straight across.
And your reason?
When, I, I'm just wondering what's gonna happen when we come to the, um, the economic development piece of that. Gotcha? Okay, thank you.
Did you hear the motion, Clyde?
So would you want to put that extra amount, if you're saying?
Well, we owe a little bit of money, just throw it in the extra, right?
No, you can do that.
We gotta find a place for it.
Oh, um, how about?
Put it under training?
Yeah, there you go.
Under training for, for the.
Whatever it is, it's, uh.
Gotcha. So let me, let me, uh.
Gotcha.
Did you hear his motion, Clyde?
Before she gets to writing?
I need to hear it again, I guess.
Hold on. Before she gets to writing, let's. Yeah. You okay with that? Okay. Before she gets to writing?
Two thirty-five total?
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand total.
The, the reason is, the legal fee is that, I still don't, and we still haven't resolved some issues.
Yeah.
So it's one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars increase.
Okay.
And I'm gonna put that under training?
Yep.
Alright, let me see where it is here.
Did you second that motion, Clyde?
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay.
So training will go from eight hundred to twenty-seven eighty-five.
Okay. Want to give you that number again?
Twenty-seven eighty-five. So it'll be two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, so signify?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a vote. Okay, now we're back to the DA. DA.
Got it, everyone? Neil McLean moves right here.
Mike Andrew.
Clyde, we're doing the district attorney is under letter D.
I am having a conference on the law today. Who's the gentleman who's gonna speak for the DA?
Neil McLean and, I'm sorry. And one of the assistants currently, Andy Robinson has moved on to a judgeship, as everyone is aware.
I know. He's, he's gonna, yeah.
I'm one of the assistants that works primarily out of Anticott County. Andrew Matoulis is the active district attorney, but he is also leaving. So we've got a number of departures from the office. I am, I will be, I am one of the ADA if the governor is not determined who she's going to appoint as the interim district attorney. Currently, I'm the only one that's actively running for the office. So that's, that's why I got, grew the short straw to come in today.
Okay.
Convince you all.
On the job training.
That's right. So it is my first time dealing with the Franklin County budget, so I appreciate the patience as we sort of go through it. I've had the assistance of Sarah Kate, who's still with me. She's, she always is very instrumental in helping me out, helping to transition from one DA to the next. We did submit the budget, my understanding, in reviewing it, at least the contemporary budget against last year, so that we, in essence, stay very true to the budget from the previous year. Specifically, importantly, the capital spending remains the same. We have some very minor increases. There's a twenty-seven dollar increase in contractual services, that's for our internal, we have an internal just wear program, the people will receive that for us. There's a two hundred and ninety-nine dollar, three percent increase in our rest line. And that is the tool we use for all of our legal research. But that looks like that was an increase for their services. There is the share file, which is sort of the innovative way Anticott County, Franklin County, and Oxford County District Three in whole has been stepping away from paper, creating sort of a dualized system of discovery, which Andy really had a big part in developing. Quite frankly, on birth, being accepted by the rest of the state because it's efficient. But there is a one hundred and fifty dollar increase in that line for the share file program. And then I was made aware this morning that apparently the lease has gone up, so I wasn't aware of that until this morning. That looks like the most significant.
That's right.
She increased.
Four hundred, yeah. It's a two thousand, huh?
Two thousand, huh?
Yeah. So it's four hundred and one times twelve, whatever that is.
Again, those are some of the things that are off the record, you can't survive without.
Yeah.
For the most part, unfortunately, as with everything in the world these days, there's priced, some small price increases, but we've tried to stay true, as we, I think traditionally have, to the budget, not to increase it, to increase it as little as we possibly can. So the budget generally remains the same.
Yeah. So I had a question, so you guys spent sixty-nine thousand less on payroll last year than you budgeted for? Is that correct?
That's still two more months, so.
Okay.
One-six.
So, how much would that be? So one more month is?
Yeah, they, they haven't utilized the part-time clerical. They are currently still trying to find something part-time, so they haven't utilized it in this budget yet.
So it's seventeen thousand?
Yes.
Six hundred and eighty dollars?
Correct.
So if they've been on this long, they ought to be able to do it without?
Well, what I was gonna suggest, and that's the only reason I know that that line would be, would be shorter than the way that it is, other than if there's a couple more months to equate, equate it in. But that position, we've had a terrible time filling.
Yeah.
In fact, I don't know if this is the official terminology, but I think it's been tabled, quite frankly, because we haven't been able to fill it. And for those reasons, I don't know, or I, I know that we're not actively looking to fill it at this point.
Okay.
But it was, my understanding is it was requested for a reason, and that along with some other changes in the office, has created additional work for some of the other individuals who did the office. But I don't believe we're attempting to fill that anymore.
So how much, uh, how, uh, so it's showing eighty-five thousand right now, but we've got two months to cover, right? So how much is it a month to cover, really? I guess, that's what I'd be looking for, you'd have to.
Well, you'd have.
Should be, be one-six, right?
I think we have five payrolls left.
What's that?
We have five payrolls in this budget year.
Two thirty-eight.
No, but they've only spent one-seventy, so. So they've spent one-seventy in ten months, and it's, no, no, eleven months, right? Well, ten and a, whatever. So you got June, you got May and June, you got May and June, you got about ten weeks left, right? So there's five payrolls, bi-weekly.
Like twenty thousand a month.
So it's forty thousand.
So it's forty grand.
Yes, okay, call it fifty.
It'll eat up forty, so there's forty.
So they got about.
You have, you have two more months of health insurance. And I think that the reason that there's a wide remainder of health insurance is because a person got done, and then it was several months before it started.
Yeah, gotcha.
That's why you would show.
Right. So, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we do three-ten, and you still got, you know, some, you'll still have some left there. And the reason I'm kind of doing some of these a little bit lower is, I wanna, I know we're gonna be in negotiations on the wages, so I'm keeping that in mind, and, and you've, I think that should, you've got about fif, let's say it's fifty grand, you got thirty-five left, I'm gonna cut this by eighteen, and then you've still got that seventeen position that you haven't filled and may not, from what I understand. Is that accurate?
That, that's correct. I think the active surgeon for it, or something that you would apply is, is not being pursued at this time.
Okay, so I move that we, okay, now we gotta figure out where to put all that.
Do you want to zero out the?
Yeah, zero out seventeen, yeah, zero out that seventeen, and that'll get us where? See, I like regular numbers.
That's more than.
No, no, it's, I, I'm gonna be about eighteen thousand, so we need to get. We could just call it, let's just zero that one out and figure the difference, that's fine. Rather than have to put it here and there. I mean, I kind of like neat numbers, but apparently it's problematic, so. So to be, that's seventeen-eight, right? No, six-sixty. Six-eight, right? Oh, seventeen-eight? No, seventeen-sixty-eight, eighty, right?
Oh, six-eight.
Yeah, so go thirty-two, eight, two-six-six. Minus seventeen-eight-hundred. So it'd be three-ten, four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. How's that sound?
Three-ten, five-eight-six.
I got four-sixty-six, three-ten, four-sixty-six, is that what you got?
I didn't count.
Did you, is that what you got? Four-sixty, four-six, I got three-ten, four-sixty-six, is that accurate? Yeah, that's accurate. So, I move that we, uh, expend three, three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars.
I come up with three-ten, five-eight-six.
How do you get that? Don't you just take?
Current total minus the seventeen-six-eighty.
Oh, you're right, I was doing seventy-eight-hundred, you're right, sorry.
You second that motion, Clyde, or no?
Wait, hold on. We don't, we gotta get the right number.
Yeah. It's three-ten, and some change.
No, it's gonna be more, it's.
I mean, three-ten, five-eight-six.
Yeah, three-ten, five-eight-six, okay. I move that we do that three-ten, five-eight-six. Okay, moved and seconded, discussion?
So I guess you are good with the five-point-nine percent for each employee plus a six-dollar raise for one person? So you're good with that?
What, say, say it again?
I said, so you are good with the five-point-nine percent for each employee, for a year there, plus a six-dollar an hour raise for one employee. You're good with that? If you do, there's gonna be additions, I can tell you that.
What Sue is referring to is item number three-zero-zero-three?
Yep.
Is an increase of six dollars an hour. And the, uh, three-zero-zero-four and three-zero-zero-five are calculated at five-point-nine percent, which is in the aletta that they.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, and you're calculating the rest of the stuff on five, right?
Everybody's, yeah, all the non-unions, five.
I had calculated, but with their, I have to, I have to put in their request, because it's.
Yeah, got it, got it, got it.
And it's up to the people to.
So what, what's the reason for the increase?
So the five-point-nine percent was the figure that we got from the federal website.
Okay.
And it listed that the federal website was going to increase the COLA by five-point-nine percent. We just took that number and presented it for our employees as well. The, in, the other side, you want me to continue with the raise, or just, just the COLA for now?
The raise, I guess, too, yeah.
I think the raise, the raise is something that's quite frankly very important to us at this point. When we, when I look back at the numbers traditionally, as they relate to this employee, it appears, been here for about eighteen years, she hasn't received a raise since two thousand and fifteen. And just by way of comparison, I understand these are, these are county budgets, but just by way of comparison, she may be one of the few employees across the district, if you look at the district completely, that hasn't received a, a raise in that timeframe. And for the work that she provides for us, generally throughout District Three, and specifically here in Franklin County, that really seems unfair, I'm surprised she's, this employee's not more disgruntled about it. But rather than be disgruntled, in fact, we're aware that she has been recruited, received offers to leave the office privately. Not only has she turned those offers down, which would result in a larger pay for her, but quite frankly, she's taken on more responsibilities, so it's a very rare instance of somebody saying, I'll take less pay and do more. We think that should be recognized. She has taken on, we lost Mary Hastings, the vast majority of her work, her work product was absorbed by this employee. Keep saying this, but we're talking about Sarah Kate. Sarah has absorbed the vast majority of her work specifically into her already existing duties. Her already listed duties equate, quite frankly, cumulatively and qualitatively to the other two individuals already working there. So that's important to keep in mind. You know, she could have taken on, in terms of keeping some of her victim work as advocate, trial assistant work. She could have said, well, since I do all this other stuff, I'll take on the thefts and criminal mischief and disorderly conduct. And she didn't do that, she actually handles all of our very serious sex crimes. So she provides a really, really important, relatively speaking, she, a really, really specific and important service to the public, generally, public safety, and to specific victims, some of the most, quite frankly, need based on age and type of crime that we deal with. So she's done that, she does all of the payroll, payroll scheduling. that, she does all of the payroll scheduling, calendaring, all of the planning internally, the administrative stuff within the office, and again, still holds on to those standard trial assistant victim witness advocate authorities. And she also, responsibilities, she also, quite frankly, with the two people we have in the individual, we've talked about how we couldn't fill a part-time position, but we have a brand-new employee, relatively speaking, that she's training. So she's doing all these things, she's training another employee. We have another TA who's got more experience, but she has to supervise that individual as well and some work through that supervision. So quite frankly, one of the hardest-working employees, and I can say that with a knowledge of all three districts that we have across the three districts. And the six dollars was not sort of a random number we pulled out. There was some discussion about whether we could be looking at maybe a couple of dollars for each. And then, quite frankly, we stepped away from that and said, "Look, we've got to address the importance of this individual to the office, to the function of the office." And remember, this isn't just to the office internally, we're talking about generally, to all of Franklin County. This is about public safety, it's not victims, and it is about internally how our office functions. And quite frankly, Sarah is irreplaceable in all those ways. So what we ultimately did is we thought, since two thousand and fifteen, no raises we've been given since...
Well, is that accurate? There hasn't been any raise for them?
Other than the payrolls, maybe.
Uh, uh, well, yeah.
Well, those are raises to people in Franklin County, I'll tell you.
Oh, no, to me too, sir. I don't disagree. I just, I, I, and maybe I shouldn't have said this, because I'm talking more about sort of the merit raises, or is that really an experience raise? So thank, I apologize if I was suggesting that is...
No, no, if I'm, if I'm just telling you, we're, you're there so much.
But that's where the six-dollar figure came from.
Thank you.
Quite frankly, we're focusing in on Sarah, because again, and this is important, we know she's being recruited outside the office, it's important that we keep her, it's important that the community keep her, and we also know she burns, and we could, and we should worry for her.
Question, Lance?
Well, what I'm trying to figure out how to do here is leave her with that raise, but in rather than five-point-nine, put five percent for the rest, so. See what I'm saying? I wanna see what that number is. I thought I was figuring it, but I clearly, I went over it. I'm giving you more. What's up wrong?
And, and Mr. Commissioner, if I could just say, if that were the trade-off, I think that's appropriate based on the analysis, which is giving you a lot of work.
Sue?
Well, I, I just got a couple of comments. Another, yes, Sarah, I consider Sarah a friend. But these merit raises, I wasn't, wasn't aware that they got merit raises. I don't think, all the years I've been here, my employees have gotten merit raises, and all our offices have learned new things. I mean, even my office, we have been, have one line to the state to do their military transfer test, but we've all had extra work for them, and to warrant merit raises, that was substantial enough. I mean, I'm just thinking in my employees, you know, and...
Well, he kinda used the word merit raise, we didn't...
I was just gonna say, I, I'm probably, with all, you know, I'm probably the terminology making a mess, that's a little new for ours. So I don't know if they're called something differently, but it, it is a raise based on the...
Yeah, that, well, it could be a keeper raise.
We like keeper raise, too, because that's what...
But it, it's Sarah, right? Could we speak to her? I mean, is that...
Yeah, yeah.
She's the young lady that can't...
All right, Sarah, how much are they offering you?
Uh, see, do I have to, do I have to say that?
You don't have to, I guess.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I was, okay, let me put it another way, let me put it another way. Um, it, could you live with any less, like four, five, you know? Man, just asking.
Uh, you know, the county is very important to me. My job is very important to me. Um, I could probably live with five.
Okay.
And I do understand, Suzie, I, I do understand where she's coming from. I do think, though, it's important to remember that her job is very important, but each office is very important.
Yeah, no, I, I know, it's just that, you know, I, I totally understand where...
Yeah, I do, I do too.
Where Sue's coming from, it's just, at the same time, it's, yeah, there's, yeah, good people hard to find.
With the five, it brings it down to fifty-six, seven...
Fifty-six, seven-eight-four?
Yes.
Okay.
And also just to let you know, with the lower in that, and also...
The five percent?
Uh, taking out the part-time, and you lower the other two to five percent, that's gonna lower also your FICRA Medicare and your main-statement retirement and your workers' comp.
Okay, where was, what was the five percent? Do you know? Did you give me that number?
I don't, I don't have what the current salary is, all I have is the five-point-nine in my system.
But can't you just back that out, at least to give me the salary? So if you put five...
It's not gonna be much of a difference, it's gonna be zero, I mean, point zero-nine difference.
Well, it's about a percent, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But we're gonna need a number, if I'm gonna make a motion.
That is true.
And that, but you, of course, you can't figure all the FICA stuff right there either, can you? That'll all be affected.
They all are affected. Okay.
I got lost in the dust, but I can't hear you. Sarah, what are you asking for, Sarah?
I didn't catch it.
Sarah?
Say it again, Clyde.
Say it again, we're, we're having difficulty hearing.
I got lost in the dust, but I can't hear you. What are you asking for, Sarah?
Uh, the request is a six-dollar raise.
A six-dollar?
Correct.
A six to zero?
Six.
Six dollars.
And what do you make now? Your account balance?
She, he wants to know what you make now, I hope, I guess.
Uh, I believe it is twenty-two-thirty.
That's correct.
And if you want a six-dollar raise, that's making twenty-eight dollars.
Yes, sir.
That's not out of question, is it, for somebody that's tired?
Could, could I make another point, just because whatever this might be worth?
He's, he's, he's asking a question, if it's not out of, out of order, meaning he doesn't think six dollars is a problem. I think that's...
Is that accurate?
Is that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear him.
He think, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but...
Were you, Clyde, were you implying that six dollars is okay with you?
What, it's paying you twenty-eight dollars?
Yeah.
And you bet, there are some other people around that say it right, that someone didn't give it up.
Okay, yeah.
Sarah, I've done a tremendous job with the DA office, she's the one that owes me the debt. And when I went to the DA office, she jumped her act and waited, so you get out of there. And I, I, I should call her on that amount.
Thank you, Clyde.
I, I know she's kept Andy Robinson in check for years.
Yeah.
And that's difficult to do.
That is.
Um, did you get me the other numbers, then?
I'm still counting.
Okay.
If I need to back the difference, I mean, you know, you get to the, uh, rest of the D, the DA office, that's a bad first step. I mean, hey, he had some just saying, and every year, for you, there's a job, and the DA office, really, really, is not an easy job to do. Figuring that all the due time you have to make up, and make sure that the DA, Sarah's office, and the woman in the DA, is a rebuilding secretary, and she will be a job. And I think that with every group, a most unfavored, is your secretary is the one that has to fill it. And I, I've been, Sarah, for every senator.
Thank you. We're waiting for some numbers for...
Yeah, almost done.
Oh, don't rush.
I would say Clyde hit on something that maybe I should have mentioned. We've said this, and I say this as an ADA, fifteen years of experience, and trying to become the next DA, and I have no doubt that Sarah will be a big part in helping me keep things going here. And frankly, and quite frankly, things are going better than some of the other counties. But I, what I would say, there's always been a saying that if you lose your office manager, quite frankly, the entire office is in trouble. You can lose ADAs, we can replace ourselves. But you lose an office manager with eighteen years of institutional knowledge and connections within the communities, that can devastate an office. So, and, and the final point is, I know we put Sarah on the spot in asking her about this six dollars, whatever it was, she didn't approach us for six dollars. We said six dollars made sense to us and then spoke with her. And I just think that's important to reference. She never gave us an ultimatum, but we saw her value, and that was another we thought was important.
Thank you. Imagine if we had to do all this without computers and calculators. We'd actually have to be pretty good at math.
I just think that we have to, we have seventy-five employees working for the county, we just have to keep them all in mind when we're doing this, and it's really, really difficult.
Yeah.
Okay, so with the five-dollar increase?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other two at five percent?
Mm-hmm.
So your total personnel services is gonna be two-thirty-two-fourty-nine?
Two-thirty-two, forty-nine, two, you're two-hundred-and-two, two...
Two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand...
Forty-nine?
Eighty-nine dollars.
Oh, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine, okay.
Was that a five-dollar increase or six?
Five.
That's basically five.
Oh, five.
Yeah, they mentioned five.
And that's all, so, okay, yeah, yeah. And then, and then the other was moved to five percent, right?
I, yes, I did.
Okay, so that means...
So it's gonna be, so your total budget would be... I need, I should write my calculator off.
You got one? And I wanted to... Basically, it's...
Uh, no, I'll, I'll use this.
It's cutting the personal services in half. The increase, two-thirty-two, yeah. Yeah, what was two-twenty-one last year, goes up eleven.
So the total budget would be three-hundred-and-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven.
Nine-hundred-and-seven, okay. And that, we still have that seven, we still have the seventeen-six-eighty out of there.
About twenty-three thousand.
So we still have that seventeen-six-eighty out of there as well, right?
I checked that out.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. I move that we, uh, expand three-hundred-and-five-thousand-nine-hun, do we have to get rid of the other one?
Yeah, we have to get rid of the other motion, still on the floor.
Yes.
But wait, has it, yeah, yeah, so. I withdraw my motion, my earlier motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right, that was clear.
All right, now, I move that we spend, expand three-hundred-and-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven dollars.
Second that motion.
Did, did you second that, Clyde?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Second that one.
Okay, been moved that we spend three-hundred-and-five-nine-oh-seven. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion?
I...
Uh, they're, they're both, three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, good meeting you.
Same here.
Good meeting you.
Good luck.
All right, so now we're down to...
Do we need more room in our jails to keep people so that the cases don't get dismissed?
We, we don't wanna dismiss cases, we don't wanna let people out on bail, we don't need to be out on bail, so it's hard to wrap those things.
Good, good, we're in agreement.
So we got the, does anyone know where the treasurer is?
Yep.
Treasurer's there.
Oh, yes, he is, sorry.
Yeah, she's here. I just didn't see it, yeah. Guess that's the next one, right?
Thank you. Uh, I also have the treasurer's report, that doesn't have to be mailed, I could, we do a last week.
Okay.
Well, with regards to the treasurer's budget, there, there are some changes from last year that we're proposing. And I'm very grateful that, that we have a new finance manager, I hope she's listening, but she knows that I feel very positive about the future, and that I think she's kind of the perfect person for the role that she is in. And she's, she's already the perfect, I should say at that point. So I think I'm very positive about the future. Things are going well. In the personnel services, uh, the first thing I want to mention is that I put in, um, additional in the health and flex benefits, that's one I, uh, that I'd like to see brought back to where it was before the pandemic. As some of you may recall, the prorated flex benefits for the treasurer's position, which is not full flex benefit, it does not cover things like health insurance, like normal, regular, full-time employees, that was eliminated from the treasurer's, um, position. And it was the only cut made during the pandemic to an employee of the county. So I'm requesting that that should be put back in the treasurer's position. I think it's a really positive thing to offer to anybody who would run for the treasurer's position, um, in the future or now, that it, it means that this is odd as a professional position. I know that I, that I work really hard, I'm hoping to improve my skills. And I think I've brought to the job excellent, um, written and verbal communication skills, particularly with entities in governance, such as the Internal Revenue Service, Name Revenue Service, Department of Labor, and locally, you know, the town managers and people like that. Um, I think it's a benefit to have the treasurer who does communicate on behalf of the county in an excellent manner. And I think it's important to have a professional treasurer fill the position. And in Franklin County, thank goodness, um, we don't have some of the problems you see in other counties with the treasurer. So that is one idea. That's my thirty-ten, oh, I'm sorry, thirty, um, forty-four. That's why there's a bump up in there. We asked for, um, finance manager to go up to those five percent for the treasurer. And then the emperors was just an oversight a year ago, when the budget was put together, but it was not included for a new finance manager to have emperors, I mean, total employees present, who's been in my thirty-four-five. So that, that may need to be in there for our request. Another, um, section, which is contractual services, and I feel really positive of going forward about working with our auditors. We still have time left on our contact with, with our current auditor. They've been very good with both the auditing services, they provide it to Franklin County, as well as they do provide some monet test services, such as helping us manage our fixed assets. And occasionally, we've had accounting services where they helped us work on changing the fund structures in Trio, so that it works better with, with our accounting software. So I did include, um, under audit, this is not specifically for the audit, but again, one of the fixed asset services is... this is not specifically for the audit, but again, one of the fixed asset services is for the accounting services, and I can explain to you why I thought that that would be a good idea. Um, I, I identified a number of items from reading, um, the management letters that the county has gotten for the past three years, that I think we should try to work on correcting, so that these, these items should be brought into line with, um, generally accepted accounting principles and applicable laws and regulations that are there. And so far, we have nothing to do with that, and with a minimal, um, assistance from, um, the same firm. It's a very large firm, so it would not be the same people who do the audit, but would be people who do accounting, are very familiar with Trio. Um, they could help us with getting our UT budget corrected, um, when it's calculated, when it's calculated, make sure it's correctly calculated, because tax laws are correct. These are a couple of areas that have occurred in recent years that they mentioned. Um, the accounts receivable and revenue, I mean, we need to be careful when, when we get to the end of the year, the current fiscal year, we wanna be sure that our accounting is in compliance with the generally accepted accounting principles. And there are a couple of other things like, um, transfers and U2s and new forms, where if you're not, if you're not an accountant, you do not understand those things. However, because the auditor has brought it to our attention, that, that it, it makes it appear that we're at risk of, if there were a large mistake, then, um, it would not be something that, that, um, we want to see the auditor say that we don't, we don't get a clean audit. So I think the idea I have is that, um, and I, and the auditor, um, is speaking in the background scheduling, and I think there may be a small amount left in that line, so I would like to have someone with the accounting, um, ability to come and sit with us. This is probably the work where there'd be maybe, um, once every week or two, a brief time, where the auditor can sit either, it could be web-based, or it could be here, and just like a balance, um, trial balance, to look through, see are there anything's that jump out, um, go into Trio, look at some of the expense, um, reports, does anything jump out, does maybe questionable, or needs to be corrected. And that will also help us get ready for our audit, for the current fiscal.
Excuse me, Pam, is, are you reading from a, a audit report?
Those, those things that I mentioned, that I, I said were in management letter, those management letters, yes, were included when I emailed you the audit. I can email you the management letters too. And like I said, I don't think that you're saying that we're doing horrible. They're not saying that at all. But I think you wanna keep heading in the right direction, and that's why they, they point these things out that, that need to be corrected. The other big thing that I want to take, um, is to figure out how to make this an ongoing process, so we don't actually need to pay that outside services. You know, how to track what it is we need to do. It, it, it has to be, these are things that need to be routinely looked at. So I think that it would be helpful for, for us all to get some tips, I guess, on that too, so that this doesn't keep happening. So, um, and also, because I'm in touch with the, with Ron Smith, who's the head of the firm, he may be able to make a presentation to you before, um, sending us the fine bill for the, the audit that they just gave. So I invited him. I don't, I don't know what, um, his schedule is, or, but given the options, you know, he may just be able to do his mudding, to, to answer any questions he may have. Also, you know, with the past two years being during the pandemic, he wasn't able to do that, so that does. And then, I think the only other thing I wanted to mention, I must be got some more questions about that, that typical, if a typical overtime for service, the accounting services, the firm does, they have many people. On staff, I mean, that for many of the clients, um, the other, the other item is additional, let's see if I can get it. It, I don't know, where there's a bump up, um, this, the staff said there was a question, and I mean, this costs me a little more office, um, office supplies are costing more. So that's the only thing that's, that's the other items, and, um, I think those would be, um, common things.
Yeah, I had a question. Uh, um, so why is it the flex benefits, right? That's, uh, what, little over six thousand dollars increase?
Right. Well, right, well, one thing you have, you do have, um, when it happens every January, when employees' health insurance usually goes up, I'm sure it's ever gone down, except when they changed the plan for employees, they reduced the, the plan down. So the health insurance money gone down one year. But when health insurance goes up, then each employee's quote health and flex benefits go up, because the health and flex benefit is a sum of the health insurance plus their, um, the amount of quote flexible benefits, which they are allowed to use, either increase the plan, health insurance plan, or they can use it to buy dental, visual, life, physical treatments, or the additional payment, or the additional into the four fifty-seven account. So, um, I did, I did that through the calculations, at least Vicki, Vicki not including that.
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, what I did, I usually, usually every year previously, we've always, 'cause we get a half a year where it's gonna be, we don't know what, what the rate's gonna be, how much it's gonna go up percentage. So we usually, always did an average of ten percent for this six-month frame. So I did add that in, and then Pam had asked me to include in the budget, um, to put back her benefits that she had previously.
But it clearly states in our handbook that part-time employees don't get benefits.
Right. Well, that's, that's what I was trying to explain, that the treasurer's position is actually, when correctly done, it's a professional position. We didn't have someone like me, um, run as someone who nothing about accounting or regulations or anything like that.
But...
So, in, in, in terms of this person, because it also states in the personal policy that the treasurer is to get point three five percent, or thirty-five percent of the regular amount of flex benefits, is clearly prorated, and is based on the fifteen K salary position. It is not a regular clerical position with set powers like Mary does. She comes in part-time. She comes in specific times when the, the treasurer's position is a professional position, which means that the reports that I do, things like that, they have deadlines, and I do know whether they take me, you know, four weeks a week or not. And I've been fortunate to have finance managers and deputy treasurers like Vicki, who, I mean, Vicki used to work thirty-seven and a half hours a week. It was very awful, um, to have a full-time deputy treasurer, finance manager.
So how many hours a week do you work?
Excuse me?
How many hours a week do you work?
Eighteen hundred a week.
Give me an average.
Well, I would say that based on the fact that there are, I wonder, thirteen or fifteen holidays where staff don't work on Mondays, but my work is in the way, so I actually work those weeks too, just not necessarily on Monday. I would say that the average, I've been, I've been pretty consistent over the course of the fiscal year for it to be between thirteen and fifteen hours a week. But that's the average. That's averaging them out. So on a week when I don't need to work, I'm just, I'm tacking a microphone there, when I don't need to work that many hours because the quarterly reports are done, the end of year report's done, the census work is done, um, that type of thing, then it's possible another week. Like when the auditor is here, those can be very time-consuming weeks. So I don't, I don't know that it really qualifies as how hard time is defined in a, in a personal policy. That's why I, I feel that we'd be all there to put it back.
Well, if we have, I think we have thirty-two and a half, thirty-seven and a half, and some forties. Anything less than that would be part-time, that's how I would assess it. But...
I think that the, the, the way that it was thought, and I've looked at the minutes in the past personal policies, if I could offer my opinion, it was seen that the prorated judge and the treasurer were professional positions, and those positions did have, um, prorated flexible benefits since the inception.
So, are we following the, the guidelines of the contract, not by the handbook? Uh, I, can I ask Sue a question, or?
Cool, yeah.
Sue, so you, I, I, maybe I got it wrong, but when she was talking about the handbook, you were kinda nodding your head when she was speaking?
Correct, you read the handbook.
Can, can you speak? I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know if you can.
No, no, can you speak? Ah, I was having a...
Oh, speak up.
Pretend you're yelling at Russell.
She's right.
Yeah.
And the call personnel policy says, I'm not sure the percentage, but part-time people do get benefits. So, in defense of her on that, you are violating the policy, you probably get it.
You want me to go get the handbook, so we can, I can go grab it?
Could you, could you resolve this, to resolve the issue?
Yeah, I think it would be something, because there's more than one part of the handbook where it actually deals with matters, I think it's gonna be kind of time-consuming, go through it.
I think that one's far in the...
Yeah, I don't, it's not long.
Unless it was taken out, but I can think if you're right, I can do this, especially if you're, yeah, it chooses.
Right. And, and like I said, it's not the full amount of benefits, and, and that's, I mean, we think about it.
That's ridiculous.
Excuse me. Mr. Harwell?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could continue to address Mr. Harwell. Think about, of the fact that, um, it does refer to these benefits, the flex benefits as a percentage of the full benefits.
Okay.
Okay? So it doesn't say in the policy that part-time people don't get benefits if it, if it is one of these two dismisses, the judge and the treasurer. Those two positions are not by their nature full-time positions, but when, when...
Which, uh, what, what's the other position you're talking about?
Judge probate was, is mentioned in the policy too, to receive the flex benefits.
Give me just a minute.
How you doing, Clyde?
I have, I have to take a break, yeah. I'm gonna, you know, for a second, I was earlier.
I think it's my phone's gonna fall.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Well, there, there would be no logic to saying that no, our, no employee who works less than, um, the thirty-two and a half or whatever hours is entitled to any flex benefits. There would be no logic to that, because there's, there is mention of the judge probate and the treasurer. And I've always been of the opinion that, now, as far as my salary goes, and my benefit, which is just probate, it's just less than half, it's thirty-five percent of a full, um, flexible benefit. I think that people from Franklin County deserve a professional, and I think that they understand that it's a professional position, just like the judge probate is a professional position. And that's the logic of why...
I'd, I'd like to have you have that debate with Sam Walton. But, could you read the...
So, it says, "The county commissioners and treasurer shall receive a monthly credit in flexible dollars equal to thirty-five percent of the total benefit package provided to full-time employees. Part-time salary department heads and the judge of probate shall receive a monthly credit in flexible benefit dollars equal to seventy percent of their total benefit package provided to full-time employees." So she's not wrong about the treasurer to be mentioned. That's thirty-five percent.
Like, it is, I think when it was originally put together, um, the four fifty-seven and acknowledgement of the importance of health insurance, I think it was acknowledged that there could be even a department head, it could be part-time, such as, I mean, at the time, I don't know quite as here, but, I mean, he was EMA director, and he might even have been part-time at that point, or maybe even full-time, I don't know. But I think it concretely that there could be at, at the dispatch perhaps, a, a part-time director, but it would be a professional position.
Um, Sue, if, if you want to or not, I'm just asking you, what do you, um, what, what's your total flex benefit package? I mean, I can look in here, I guess, but, but yours is cumulative.
I guess, I guess, uh, she gets the two seventy-five one.
Oh, it's two seventy-five a month?
She has the full-time, you have the full-time benefit, right?
But that's like, you said seventy percent?
So like, would I, no, not for her, though.
Oh, okay.
This is, it says, uh, "Part-time salary department heads and the judge of probate shall receive a monthly credit in flex benefits equal to seventy percent." She's full-time. Sue was full-time.
Okay, so what about the part-time?
That's, that's what the...
Thirty, it's thirty-five percent?
Department heads and judge of probate get seventy percent. County commissioners and treasurer shall receive thirty-five percent of the total benefit.
Mr. Chairman, what does this kind of explain to, um, Mr. Harwell? The, the flex benefits is two components. It's the cost of the health insurance for a particular plan that the county has approved to be the standard plan. This is for non, um, non-직 employees.
Mm-hmm.
But it also has added to it this component of, wait, it was fifty-two hundred and seventy-five dollars?
The flex dollars.
The flex dollars, the two seventy-five. So those two components make up the total that, for example, a department head might, might sue, you get.
Okay. Okay, why don't we, uh... I gotta, I, I'm gonna make a motion. Okay. So I recommend that we give, the, the salary stays the same, eighteen thousand, and I recommend that we give, uh, twenty thousand, four hundred in flex benefits, not twenty-three. So that would make that new total down there a hundred and six, five, seventy-three, if I'm not mistaken, and it would make the new total one forty-two, oh, four, three at the top. And that's my motion. I think we oughta take a break. Okay. And when Clyde comes back, we'll have the full.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It's still gone.
Twenty thousand, four hundred, which is three thousand dollars over the seventeen-four.
So I'll, I'll have to figure out the, uh, the FICR.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't know that.
FICR, the work is calling.
Okay. Also, could you, I know this is gonna be a pain, I don't know how... I know this is gonna be a pain, I don't know how hard it is for you. But can you give me all the budget in free, for the non-union, right? Give me 3, 4, and 5%, what the, what that number all is. I know we put 5 in here, but just as, as we go forward.
That was figured out, don't you? I thought we sent it to you.
Yeah.
Oh, you probably had. That's all.
She has it, she?
Yeah, okay, I got it from that. You emailed it to me, if I'm not mistaken, probably.
Yes, I thought.
Clyde?
Yep, we're gonna take a break. Is Clyde coming back?
He's there, he's there.
Hey, back already, huh? We're gonna take a break Clyde.
What are you gonna, what are you gonna? Take a break now?
We're gonna take a break for a half hour.
Half hour.
So we have some new numbers.
Okay, I make a motion on the treasurer's, uh, budget to be a total of 141,886. That keeps the treasurer's salary at 18,000 and increases the benefits from 20, uh, from 17,400 to 20,400, but not to the full amount.
What do you need, without that?
Well, she wants 23,628, uh, but I'm agreeing to raise it 3,000, not 6,000. It's closed.
Yeah, uh, don't forget part of, part of that flex benefits also is for the full-time employee.
Yeah, but.
That's the only thing I.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a little tricky with the numbers there because of what Vicki said. She mentioned that there's a built-in increase for the health insurance, so 10% of that.
Yes. That means about $1,700 is an increase that I put in for six months.
If we go to change the intent, maybe that would help.
Yeah, no, well, the intent is that before, the 17,400, that's not for you. That was what, for the other employees, right?
Correct.
So we're raising it, um, um, 3,000, so you're gonna be probably in the 2,500 range, somewhere like that. And that's about what Ms. Jordan got this morning, who's a full-time employee. I think that's kinda.
Yeah, because you're, the, per the personnel policy, it says 35% of total benefit package.
Were you drinking in that mug Clyde?
What, Eric?
Are you having some coffee?
So the total benefit package with 35% of it would be, oh, hold on.
What, what are you multiplying Vicki? What, what's the product, 35% of what?
Yeah, so it would have been 5817 for the treasurer. The 35% is with the highest health insurance plus 275, um, flex dollars.
Yes, we know what the intended is.
So it may only be 485 per month, times 12 months is 5817. That's what it would have been for the treasurer. Okay, so, so basically whatever, whatever, whatever is what we took out is what you want more.
What's that?
For her benefits, correct. We, we decreased it by about an overall under $2,000. So you want, you wanted to subtract it from her benefits, is what you're saying.
No, kinda one.
Because it was 23,628.
Oh, yeah, 23,628, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, 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 okay, yeah. No, I was looking at the adding from the other end, so, but yeah, gotcha.
So is what Lance is trying to motion for, giving her the 35% for the handbook?
No.
No.
What percent?
He's not, he's not, he's not a standard percent. He's just standard for her.
I don't know, maybe 18, somewhere in there, 18, 20, I'm guessing. Dropped off ahead.
Okay, well, I think we need to change more about what, what the intent is.
Yeah.
Vicki?
Yes, we can figure that out.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if, if you do that, then you've got to, I mean, Heidi would, I don't know what that number is big.
Because it's 5817.
Well, we agreed to make a whole, but that still wasn't, that didn't figure out that, did it, or did it?
Yeah, when you make a whole, you should get 100% of the full-time benefit now.
Were there any questions about the treasurer's budget lines?
Yeah.
I invited the county auditor to make a presentation. If you have any questions about the audit or anything like that.
No, I think I'm good.
We still work here on numbers.
But do we have a copy of that report that you were citing from? Did we get a copy of that?
Excuse me?
About the, uh, we didn't get a copy of that about the deficiencies in the handbook?
Well, yes. When I emailed you the county audit.
Okay.
There were two attachments in addition to the audit.
Okay.
One is a standard letter that explains the responsibilities of the auditor. The other letter that I emailed you that's on is called a management letter, which points out some deficiencies, I guess you could say, but it's really for our use as management and figuring out how we're gonna control this situation and how we're gonna keep track of things ever.
Okay, could you stay up, up, up on top of that so that you can make sure that the commissioners are aware of those deficiencies?
Well, that's what I was thinking. If the auditor were able to make a presentation, he can ask the auditor for.
Not necessar, not necessary, I mean, I, I, I can, that's what the treasurer should do. She's the professional.
Well, the letter is addressed to the commissioners, so I hope you can go back in a week.
Yeah, I'm sure I read it, but you pointed out some things that I had forgotten or I didn't pick up, so I, I think, I think you as a attorney would get a handle. Okay, I, I'm gonna second that motion.
That's what I was going to.
Clyde, you didn't second it, so I will.
Okay, I mean, Harvey, do you care of it?
Any further, any further discussion on that motion?
What's the final number?
Uh, 141,886, is that, that's right.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor of that motion, so signify.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, good. We'll move to, are we gonna talk, uh, to Jim Clyde, or is he available?
You ready? You ready here? Jim? Ready to speak?
Yes.
How's the, how's the personal services?
Under Jim.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, keep, keep going.
Okay, so the only increase that are in the, uh, communication and contracts, the life extension, basically, are around 1410 and we've got, uh, various items included in that. Other than that, besides the personnel, life extension, that's it. Easy peasy.
Okay. So it's an increase of, uh, 9,000?
Correct.
Um, I have a question, Jim.
Yes, fine.
So, so you've got $89,000 surplus? So, and that includes you got two, you got two months, uh, five paydays, right? 10 weeks? That's a third of his budget. And you.
And hopefully I can also add a little budget surplus only because there hasn't been any major problems in the technical side. There should be a little bit of surplus.
So do you have any idea what you'll have left after you're, uh, finished the payout?
The payout of what?
So you've got another five paydays for, for your pay. What, how much is that gonna be? And how much of that 89,000 will you have left as of July 1st?
Well, that's what I was about to say. We have a few issues. As far as technology-wise, I really don't know what that number would be. I mean, this is what we can fail, and that's why there's a, a support to come in. So it's not pretty high of a bid, but.
So, um, just to let you know, on the capital expenses, these are two things that go into reserves. Those have not been expended, they've not been taken out of his budget. That's $27,000.
Oh, so that's coming out of that already?
Coming out of his budget to go into the reserves account.
So then the real number then would be that 279 minus the 27,000, right? If he's gonna take that out of the, his budget that's already there? In other words, could he take the 27,000 out of that, what's left of that 89?
It'd be about 60, 60, 70,000 to be in his budget.
And then there'd be enough to pay a payout?
But he's still got contractual too, I mean, it's, you know, I don't have this current warrant in this expense report, you know?
He just wants to transfer that at the end of the.
Oh, put this back in.
Which line item are you talking about?
Add back in his budget.
Transfer?
So he wants to add. Yeah, for 60,000, let's say it was 50,000. So he, he wants to take whatever's left and put it back into the budget.
Well, he only can do that per a line item.
Yeah.
It'd be as like contractual, if you want to take money from that, put it into next year, he can't, but he can't just take a, say he's got 10,000 off the whole budget. He can't just take it and put it to one line item.
You understand that, Jim?
Yes, I do, yes. And if anything, we have some of, some of the things that I might owe you for.
Consultation.
Um, would you have a problem if we cut the 27,000 out and see, and see if you had enough with the left, with the rest of it?
Uh, yeah. All right, 20, 27,000 is, I'm the 7,000 dollars company employee that I would reclaim it. And usually I hold off on spending that if we don't have a problem. But then I'll, towards the end of the fiscal year, I'll, I'll make some, I'll report it to you.
Yeah, but, but my point is, you should have well over that left, right? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's hard to tell because, I mean, you've still got five payrolls.
Yeah.
You take out the 27,000.
Mm-hmm.
And then he's got other contractual bills that will build monthly, so we got two, at least two months on those. So it's, it's just a guessing game basically about that.
That's right. 20,000 minus 27,000, the budget for the both sides, I think, is never updated. Because with ARPA, you're able to, uh, cover a lot of that money for the, for the, for the, for the, so this would be a future for the next person to cover all in the IT, in say six or seven years.
Cause the server, how much was the server, Jim?
How much, how much did they got?
Yeah, how much was it?
In all this, it ended up being about 160,000 dollars.
But we, that's what we did out of ARPA, right?
Uh, I think with ARPA, I saw, I, I worked with, 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 uh, APE.
Okay.
To, uh, get the money towards the purpose of the ARPA, and then we'll pay it back with the ARPA.
How close are we to that? Well, don't get all, the whole budget, you know?
Oh, well, with the calculations that we started with, we're only 118,000 below, we're only.
Yeah, and we settled the contract. It's gonna be over soon. So I'm, I'm, I support what you're trying to.
Yeah, let me just get the number.
To keep under, I think we ought to take the money.
Yeah, we're still in two negotiations, so that makes a.
We need.
That could be a big hit.
Okay. Oh, we're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I mean, you want it, you can walk down that server upgrade because you're down to, I know you'll pay 5,000, 10,000 dollars for a flying thing. Like you said, that's a cover in the future, say 270,000 or 200,000. We can do another upgrade. And thankfully, I'll be long on.
So what are you thinking to cut?
I'm, I'm thinking to cut the, the whole 27,000.
Oh, you want to cut the whole 27,000?
Yeah.
If something.
Well, and you're gonna bring your own, your own, your own, your own.
And we just cross our fingers.
There's several dollars to, uh, cover up us.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to cover it on another end.
I had another five, we should have just put fuel on up.
Yeah, that's understandable.
It's doubled, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And uh, the HVAC, if you want to leave that at twenty, I have no problem with that. We'll flip the coin, whatever. Inmate programs, was it across the, I know there's a cost of fourteen dollars.
Yeah, that's in, that's not tomorrow.
That's in, okay, and so that, that's because it's an increase. Um, go over commodities under five thousand. Uh, food, food has gone up crazy.
Yeah, but it does.
So we have another ten to that. Uh, we, we have, um, the kitchen supplies, they're with the two twenty six, we've reduced that one by a thousand twenty. Reduced our ass in that. Maintenance, I mean, we can leave that at two thousand, but, you know, costs a lot of money. Why don't we leave it at two thousand?
Two thousand?
You know, five bucks.
Oh, wait, wait, here's one. The transport van.
Yeah, that's the one I just told you about. We're asking for a transport van. We've been looking for something that would be covered in a.
That, that's, I remember we talked about that earlier.
Yeah, and uh, we have not been able to find anybody. Gee, remember, we, we asked around for somebody who could uh.
Like a, a, a.
Like our cruisers are.
Like a full efficient van?
Hybrids.
Yeah, yeah, nothing? Really?
Nothing.
How do we expect? No, you can't really do that.
No.
That's not good.
They'll be out, they'll be for another couple of years.
And the van is quite old.
The one that we want to get rid of is.
They really don't, they don't have anything, huh?
Has inspection this year.
Hey, that's great. I don't understand. How are we gonna save the planet? Um, alright. I don't understand why it doesn't fit.
And there's no parking garage range for this year either, so that's ten thousand now.
Yes.
Yep, go ahead, Clyde.
What'd he say?
Transportation.
How many man stayed off the list?
We just have one.
One.
One?
Just one. Yep.
Yes.
Has he been to the academy?
He has been.
Corrections academy, and he's also green pin certified.
Just one.
Just one, yep.
That's forty hours.
Forty hours, we look, yep. Plus overtime.
And the next one is custodian. Does Gil have the half a custodian? Will you be raising your claim? That's what, that's what you have to hear.
I can't even understand it. It's forty-three thousand, yes, that's the uh.
Custodian.
Custodian.
Custodian wage, that's correct, full time.
Why do you have a custodian for the jail? Don't you make three anymore?
Uh, negative. We, we have to have a custodian available, it's not like it was back in the day. Uh, the only people we're housing these days are really the bad ones, and, and ninety-nine percent of the time, they can't be released from themselves. And uh, because of their, their crimes they've committed, and because of the uh, classifications that they are. We're lucky if we have one person monitoring, that's all we've really had in the past couple of months, just one person that can actually work outside with a custodian, and one person inside that can uh, generally do floors and such. But as far as general maintenance and that sort of thing, that's all we need, a full-time custodian.
He's, Clyde, he's not only just a custodian just cleaning, he's also in charge of the HVAC system, um, the plumbing, all of that stuff that in an older jail needs to be maintained all the time. Of course, uh, with our Department of Corrections standards, all these, the water temperature, air quality, uh, airflow, all of that stuff is monitored through him. Plus, he's also a certified corrections officer who fills in on the floor, especially like now.
Wait.
Because it's, and it's been, right now, we have uh, our clerical working the floor twelve-hour shift today, because she is also certified, because we are in desperate need of some help.
And does he move law for us? He, he probably moves law too.
Moves law?
Yes.
No more chain gangs.
Yeah, he does everything. If we don't have any men available, he does everything.
Thank you for answering that question.
Yep.
Alright, so we're at. Knocked her down ten.
So I moved HVAC from thirty to twenty?
Yep, one.
And I uh, under maintenance, five two two seven, moved it from twenty-five hundred to two thousand. And I believe that's it so far.
Just two things, maintenance? So on the next one, five two two seven, yeah.
Just to be kinda clear here, main, the pre-trial services that we have, uh, line number four zero two six, that does not reflect an increase from last year, because I'm not sure what's happened during the commissioners meeting when you met with me pre-trial. They were requesting a different uh, rate.
That's right, I remember that.
So I don't know what the.
We didn't take any action, no.
Or you didn't take any action on it?
No, I remember we heard about it.
No, we waited for it.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's still the same as last year, at this time.
Do you, do you know what the amount is that they recommended? Seven percent?
It was more. It was more, huh?
It was seven percent, it was seven percent, yep.
Well, there goes some savings we did then.
And that's for, that was pre-trial, you said?
Pre-trial services, yes. Four zero two six.
Times seven percent.
There's one other thing, is our consulting services, where that happens to be. Uh, four zero seven five, that's gonna be coming up for.
So that'll be eighty-one seven thirty-two. With seven percent, eighty-one seven thirty-two.
What was that number you were just talking about, Doug?
Uh, consultant fees is the next one, that I was talking about, that's for mental health services and so forth, that's gonna be coming up.
No, no, what was the num, the detail number?
Four zero seven five.
Four zero seven?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, got it, got it.
Consulting fees?
So I'm not sure, that's, that's.
What'd you guys spend on that one?
Yeah, they haven't presented anything to you for the next fiscal year.
It's gonna have to go back up or the, which is the graph right now, so that number is kind of, there it is.
Well, so last year, you spent only thirty-three thousand on that, huh? Thirty-three seven fifty?
Yeah, they haven't built us for the last two quarters.
Oh, they haven't built, so we still owe them, yeah.
That, that line I was usually on at the end of the.
Okay. Can we just speed them sandwiches? Chain gangs, where are they?
The, just, just an example, a case of eggs, last month was twenty-five dollars, this month forty-one.
Wow. Alright, so with those few things that we've taken out, what is the new number?
Hold on.
Which was on, what was the other number? Forty-six eleven, what's the other number?
Uh, Austin, don't forget, the kitchen supplies has been reduced to about, you already factored that in.
Forty-six eleven?
Yeah.
We put from, uh, from thirty thousand to twenty thousand.
Yeah, the HVAC. What's the other one? The um, number.
I didn't know, do you want to put in the increase for pre-trial?
No, we went, uh, forty, five two two seven, we went to two thousand.
Yes, I got that. What about four zero two six, pre-trial services that Doug mentioned?
Yeah, I see it up there, but we're gonna have to raise that, right?
Yeah, with the seven percent is eighty-one seven thirty-two.
Alright, I'll put that in. I wasn't so sure that it was necessary. Well, but, okay, here's my thing. Once again, I'm getting back this half-million-dollar number. Is, it, so at the end of the year, right, that goes back in to the, so when we're dealing with a cap and all that, that would go back in to help with that, right? Whatever was left.
It just goes back into the fund balance, it doesn't go, it doesn't help with the cap for next year.
Okay, it does, alright, well, that's.
Now, unless you want to increase, uh, from undesigned it, also.
So, wait a minute, say that again?
So you, you can, you can take so much funds from undesigned it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the fund dollars?
And put them into revenues or something?
And put it in the revenue part.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I think currently I put in the budget for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, that was.
To be put in? To, to put in?
Yes.
We could probably put another fifty in, but I'll probably want to. Alright.
Cause I know in previous years, when people have, like, they increased their capital by fifty-one thousand. One year, we actually increased the undesigned, undesigned, the amount of the, of the.
The balance?
Yep. So it doesn't, so it doesn't increase.
Alright, well, then put the seven percent in, and then figure the rest of that out again.
So is that gonna come back up for discussion?
What's that?
The pre-trial services?
Yeah, we haven't agreed to anything.
That's what I mean, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, well, my own thought was, if we put seven in, right? It's better to reduce it than raise it, and that money would ultimately be able to come back around anyway, right?
Yeah, but you don't wanna create a budget like that too much, because then you're taxing people for more than you're using it.
Alright, you wanna, you wanna do five percent then, or? You wanna do none?
They didn't really explain the reason that they wanted to increase.
I got the idea they were talking about inflation, so.
Added positions, remember, she said that they had added some.
They could have gotten, and I'm not for that. I'm for smaller.
That was a majority of that thing.
But, so my question is, do we have a choice?
Yeah, do we have a choice?
It's pretty important for, helps keep people out of jail.
Without that, our best, we wouldn't even be able, we'd be sending people away to be deported.
So if we didn't pay them what they wanted, they'd just walk away?
Well, they increased everybody's budget from what they said, everybody's feeling it.
We did, we did, both the initial savings to the county, to keep it out of jail, and to receive a bounty.
If all the savings that were ever talked about were real, we'd be taking money in.
Those that couldn't get out on a pre-trial.
No, I, I get it, but it's. I agree with that comment.
Increased the whole entire budget by well above what they're asking us.
Okay, yeah.
So after the addition in the couple deductions, uh, come up, we have two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, ninety dollars.
Alright, I move that we uh, give them that.
Two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, ninety dollars.
Yep. Oh, I love putting zeros in.
That was the budget by about.
Not much.
Five thousand.
Yeah.
Five thousand dollars.
That's fine, yeah, well. Alright, did you make that a motion, Lance?
Yep.
Clyde, did you hear that motion?
Yes, I did.
What are your thoughts?
Two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, ninety dollars.
Yeah, I.
And two, two million, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, and. Oh, two million, it should be cash now.
Yep. Close to two and a half. Not much, but a bit.
Five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yep. It's made, made, Lance made it a motion.
Did I say?
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, I'm happy to hear it.
I'm happy hearing for you. Any further questions, comments? All in favor of that motion, so signify? Three to zero. So, thank you. And next is Sheriff. Let's see if that's the next one down. Register of D's now. Ran out?
I tried to do those two together.
Yeah.
So any of the sheriff looking here for both?
So his number is? F, no, L.
L.
Three down. L.
The letter L.
Leroy. Okay.
Okay, um, alright, starting off with personal services and all this, uh, three thousand to four thousand, is there any comments about that? I usually let the office staff do that, I don't really mess with that, I mean, they usually take care of that for me.
The capital outlay is down to a hundred thousand. Right? So a hundred thousand left?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be for the cruisers.
That's for the bar.
That's for the cruisers?
Yeah.
So why do we need the fifty-nine?
Why do we need the fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Because we need copier lease contracts, you got the equipment servicing line item there, you got the, the computer hardware line item, and parking lot breaks is no longer there, right?
Okay, so that's.
That's what's left. Fifty-nine, you said, a hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, on the second page, forty-nine forty and forty-nine fifty, is that training for the dogs or the officers?
That's officers, and the training's gone up, I think we're probably gone over that line, I'm moving it to forty-nine.
Yeah, it's thirty-eight hundred.
Yeah, we're over that big time. They've increased training at the academy, and, and we're still mandated that everybody has to have additional training on top of stuff that we provide every year. So it's just, nothing's gotten cheaper. Criminal investigation, forty-nine oh six, saving the cost of uh, of uh, certain, uh, you know, equipment that we use, uh, software, that sort of thing, for investigative purposes, as well as uh, the cost of analyzing drugs and tests, and all the stuff we need for investigations, that's gone up, I think we're, we're not over, we're pretty close to that already. Let's see, if we can look that up, just to verify what was saved.
So the total budget's only up about, not even three thousand, right?
Right.
That's because of the.
The V five cruisers. We asked for some increases, but the ARCA thing kinda took the bite out of it, but still, uh, like fuel, for example.
Yeah, I see you fit fifteen.
We're a little over.
Hopefully that covers it.
Yeah, and with four two oh six, I, I bumped it up to a hundred thousand, just, we're already blown that way by many thousand already. Just because of the, the national price increases we, our experience in.
Scott, what's uh, five two two nine, medical? We budgeted two thousand last year, and you ran over.
What is that given?
Item two nine, uh, five two two nine.
That would be in the jail.
I don't have that.
Oh, it's in the jail?
Yeah.
I forgot to ask that question. I had that checked off.
Well, I would assume, maybe that's on the medical?
Yes.
Yeah, just price of drugs have gone up. That's, that's probably what that amounts to, at the jail.
And those COVID tests that you have to do all the time?
No, we've been pretty good, we've been lucky about that, but, you know, one inmate shows up, and they're suffering from AIDS or something?
Yeah.
We, we absorb that cost.
Yeah.
Or they go to the hospital for whatever, and they come back to the jail, we're paying for those medical expenses, or the secretary manager's health insurance company, right?
Sets of teeth, new set of teeth, if somebody gets one knocked out?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Scott, under uh, your capital on motor vehicle, for this, this current fiscal year?
Yes.
There's still forty-three thousand dollars on there, are you gonna be utilizing that this fiscal year?
That was uh, left, well, that, that money there is left over, I mean, I could ask to have that brought over and get rid of this thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, if, if they would agree to it, sure, I would still, carry that over, that would help us pay for it. And the only reason I did that thirty, even though ARCA's there, but since we made that ARCA request and they approved it, prices for equipment for these cruisers have already jumped considerably, so I was gestating, but yeah, if you wanna dump that thirty grand and, and do a carryover in the final, I'd be happy to plan.
Yeah, we're, which, which item number?
Uh, that would be seventy-three forty-nine.
Okay. Motor vehicle. Yeah, it's forty-three and, yeah, so just dump that to zero?
Yeah.
Then, then when they do, when they, I don't know if I'll still be here when they do the carryovers toward the end of fiscal year, but.
How much is in there right now?
Uh, forty-three thousand, one forty-nine.
One forty-nine, okay. Perfect.
And then, when it's, on July first, right, that's when everything else that's either not been spent falls into that, to number two, raises the laws, that number, how does that work?
Yeah, well, what they would do, I mean, when their fiscal year closes, everything goes to fund balance, but in the first meeting in July, usually they do the carryovers.
Yeah.
They say to ask to carry those funds, so we just pull it from there to, back into the budget.
Okay.
So it's from line item to.
So then that'd be thirty thousand less?
Yeah.
So, so B one eight three one? One million, eight hundred and thirty-one, three ninety-three? That's my pathetic. What's that? You talking about thirty thousand or twenty thousand? Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
So it's sixty-one, so it's gonna be thirty-one, right? It's gonna be one eight three one, one million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three ninety-three, is that right?
Yep.
We have one carrier for county?
Yeah, eighteen two.
Okay, Brisbane?
Excuse me?
First one program?
First one, yes, yes.
That's only a, that's only, if you have one million, eight hundred and thirty-one, that's only a twenty thousand dollar cut, because they've got eight five one. From thirty to fifty-one is twenty-one thousand. What?
You may have. The ask was one point eight six one million?
Yeah, right here.
Minus thirty, thirty thousand dropped to one point eight three one.
Yeah. Sheriff's budget?
I gave that U sheet to you earlier today.
Yeah, you're right here, Terry, if you just take, oh wait, yeah, you, no, you've got a different number there.
Yeah.
There you go. Let's go with that. Here you hit the right sheet.
This is how we stay on four percent.
This is a weird thing, is there anything? Is that part of it? Yeah, that's, that's a difference, now I agree with you with your number. This doesn't look like a replacement sign. So we made that a motion. I move that we uh, spend one million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars for the sheriff's budget. I move that we spend one million, eight hundred, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars for the sheriff's budget. Okay, moved in second, any further questions, discussion? All those in favor of that motion, so signify?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, alright, thank you, Sheriff.
Yep.
And I'm on the same page. Deeds. I think who's here, been waiting patiently? You want a donut, Sue, I got extras up there. I'm gonna find, that's not the red page. It's difficult, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, not always in my pages.
Yeah, me too. Oh, wow, save the paper, but Deeds is under. Deeds is under J.
Can you count my explanation page, I guess I would wait for any questions?
Yeah, did we? I like that, a couple of departments have always done that, that helps. So, increase of eleven thousand.
There was most of that if you.
Yeah.
The personnel.
Personnel services. Back to, actually went down.
Yeah.
So it's basically just personnel services.
Just the increases in wages, yeah. So, um, with the, with your salary, that's, we, right, where do we move that to?
It was forty-six.
Right, okay, forty-six. So then.
That figure is what the budget committee commanded.
Alright. So forty-six times five percent, do you even know what that is?
Should be the. Yes, it, which should be the forty-eight.
I just double check. Yep, it is. Check in.
Yep, forty-eight three comes up to be.
Yep, I know, I got it. Alright. I move that we uh, spend twenty, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and five dollars on the treasury budget, I mean, excuse me, the deeds budget.
What'd you say it was?
Whatever it is here, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and five, uh, two hundred and forty-three, two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Four oh five.
Four oh five, yeah, whatever's in there.
Twenty-five minutes, four hundred and five thousand.
Thank you, Clyde.
Ready?
Yes.
Correct. Moved in second, any further discussion, I think.
What was the amount again, sorry?
Two, three, five, four oh five. Okay, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Two, and I'm opposed. So I think that registrars a negotiable item, I'd love to negotiate. Okay, thank you, Sue. Probate is next.
They texted her, but I don't know if she saw, you can go check.
She must be on.
Didn't we just do?
She might be busy in the window.
Okay.
Hope she gave me a thumbs up.
Gotta do that, oh good. Okay, we don't know that flex benefits one there, right? Right?
Oh, the new budget for probate, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, Vicki was doing something with that, Vicki, where are you?
It's, I'm doing something with the probate, based on their. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
So.
I put it in the wrong column and I lost my number. You know, about your deeds sheet? For personnel services?
Have I seen you before?
Have I seen you before? Yeah. I've been around these parts.
And I think you had a little blurb about what's gonna happen.
I did.
Mileage.
Um, some of it's already addressed, but are, um, the numbers, the personnel services, need to be adjusted based on.
All right, so I think I got it.
Got it?
So in the probate, hold on. So per the negotiations, the personnel services total is coming down to one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars.
One eight zero nine three one.
Nine three one. One eight zero nine three one, yes, under personnel services.
One, eight, zero.
Mm-hmm.
It's coming down?
Nine three one.
Why is that coming down again?
Under three zero two eight, we moved it down to forty-one thousand.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, so that lowers your FICR and that also lowers your EMPIRES and your works comp.
Now, what about the flex part? Because I don't think, if it looks, that doesn't look to me like that's going to be enough for the make or hole part, right?
So have we reduced, what do you add in, are you adding in flex dollars?
The flex.
Flex dollars also, okay, that's not included in this total.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
I did not know that, hold on.
Yeah, that's the new. Does that number reflect what we did yet? Well, we told them make or hole. What? Yeah. We didn't realize it was seventy percent. I didn't anyway. But it's, you know, it's.
Mr. Chairman, was that voted in public session after the executive session?
Yes.
It was.
Yes, it was, but I wasn't up here.
Is there garbage can you hear?
Last one up there is.
So the benefits line item is going to be thirty-eight, six fifty.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah, six fifty-two.
Six, which deep is line item?
Three zero four four.
Okay, I don't fully understand that. Put those numbers again.
Thirty-eight, six fifty-two.
All right, I'm completely lost here.
Because the health is included in there, but not in the flex dollars, which is two seventy-five a month, times twelve months.
Yeah, but this is only, this is only, so the, what we're saying is, the increase of about, almost four thousand, not quite, right? Just covers her?
Yeah.
Well, how does that?
Flex dollars are two seventy-five a month.
Okay.
Times twelve months is thirty-three hundred dollars.
Because, so earlier we were dealing with thirty-five percent for her, that number was way higher. And it's like seventy for her, right?
It's not seventy for her, it's seventy for the judge of probate. She's not the judge of probate.
Okay.
The inbox, I know what was in the inbox.
So she's, which is hers?
She's the registrar, she's not.
Yeah, okay, but what percent of it?
She would be, you decided to give her the full-time benefit like everybody else.
Right, but I thought full-time.
There's no percentage, it's.
Oh, okay. All right, I just was figuring this out.
Be the full benefit.
Okay, got you, all right.
So that brings the total for the personnel services to one eighty-four, two thirty-one.
Eighty-four, two thirty-one, and that's going to bring that up, or whatever, I have the differences in those two.
So the budget would be two oh four, seven ninety-one.
Two oh four.
Seven ninety-one, that's what I come up with.
Would you come up with two oh four, nine, seven ninety-one?
Seven ninety-one.
Yeah, that's what I got. All right, I move that we've spent two hundred and four thousand dollars, two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars on the probate budget. Moved in second. Any further discussion? You have anything else, Clyde?
No.
Is that it?
That's it.
All in favor of that motion?
We got Superior Court.
Yeah, I forgot to add Superior Court on there. That would be the first item under B.
B, so is somebody here to represent them?
No, it's just, it's basically used for witness fees and officer's fees during Superior Court.
All right.
Which, of course, because of COVID, we haven't spent it the last couple of years, but we've always kept it in there.
All right, I move that we spend three thousand dollars for Superior Court fees. Hear that motion, Clyde?
Yes, Sheriff.
So moved in second, that we spend three thousand dollars for Superior Court, that we don't know what we're spending enough, right? Well, in case we have some capital case, you know about. Oh, yes, um. My brothers.
Putting his fees on.
Mine are all dead, so I don't have to worry about them. All in favor of that motion, so signify.
Aye.
Aye, aye. You never know, one day there might be a county commissioner that loses it and finds himself on the defensive. Yeah, you never know. You never do.
And then if I get it on my due date. I will let you see, Frank Academy, what the Frank Academy development has been in terms of budget. This is the only Academy that's up there and fell upon honor. And I would suggest that, and I would really, in that progress, and I have a lot of ideas. Now, why are we here to be all for this fact in super budget and then question people who go on?
Okay, I'm not going to support that, Clyde, and I'll tell you why. Because we just hired a new administrator who has economic development background. So I don't think we know exactly where this is going to be going forward. So what I, I'll just get a little bit of head, but I will propose that we do take sixty thousand out of the TIF this year, won't do it now. I'm not making a motion now for the economic development.
Do you want, what is that in your budget?
Nope, nope. Because we don't know, we've hired this new administrator, Clyde, who has economic development.
I realize that Blackwood waited down with outside things like that. I mean, she's going to have her annual just, she's going to be back now.
We don't, we don't know what she's going to do yet. That's kind of my point is, maybe it's going to be easier, maybe she wants to do it a different way. It's just, it's up in the air because we've hired her, that's all that I'm saying is, I just want to hold off and putting that in until we know exactly how that's all going to play out. But I'm willing to take some money out of the TIF, Clyde, it's just not, I don't want it in the budget right now.
Did I, never care what I go on? You put charity in there, so I guess I lost the balance, right?
Clyde, Clyde, we hired this lady because she had all of these experiences and expertise.
I realize that, Terry, she's thoroughly out of her power. She's done a great job, very good job. But I'm going to say, you can't wait it down with all the extra jobs. She's going to have her annual.
She's going to have roughly, what, eight hours a week, right? Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think we don't know yet.
Eight hours a week, but it's really hard to know what her, what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I know, I don't think we know yet, so I don't think I want to put it back in the budget. When we know, we'll know more next year. I talked to Charlie, you know, Terry's agreed to fund some of it out of the TIF and that's probably the best that we can do this year. That's what we used to do. We used to, we used to, we used to fund a hundred, sixty thousand dollars, thirty thousand from the TIF, thirty thousand from the county. And the minute that the new economic director took over, he doubled that. So, and I haven't seen anything in return, so I'm not going to support that. I'm going to wait for this young lady that we hired to see where she wants to go with that.
Terry, I'm, this is that chief, as we had at the end.
Okay.
Will you give me a confirmation? Uh, sir? Will you give me a, uh?
Will do.
You got my number?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the budget committee meeting is tomorrow evening at six P M. All new sheets.
Okay, I'm not going to be able to be there because I'm headed out of here, headed for Philadelphia soon as I get home. And so can you, can you make it, Terry, or? Although when we went, I want to ask this thing. No.
Where is it?
Up, yes, upstairs.
They usually run it. Yeah, they just got to run it and. They cut me off last year, so they didn't want to hear it.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Chairman came to me and apologized afterwards, I said, you don't need to, I know who you are. You got that power. Now we're going to tell you where we at. Duly noted.
Budget committee, yeah.
We'll see how that goes. Your objection has been duly noted, yeah, he was, he was talking about that.
Can we present some warrants or?
Was he here? You know, you got your.
Do you want, do you want Pam to present the warrants before we conclude? Because we never did any of the treasurer stuff.
Oh, I guess you should be.
We ought to hear from the treasurer, you think, for the report. I think I got it signed. I'll put those there. These here. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Clyde? We're going to do the treasurer's report. The treasurer.
Back to treasurer.
So I'll have all their sheets for you tomorrow.
No ones.
Hi, thank you. I gave you, I gave four warrants, one of each of the county, the UT, the TIF, and the payroll. That's all for today, other than the banking regulations, the warrants are done. And we're doing a good job in Treasury Department, Department. And I am very optimistic about the investment of the ARPA funds. Just briefly, we are going to make a recommendation to you for your next regular meeting in the beginning of May. But I can see even from the last commissioners meeting, the Fed is now becoming inflation fighting. And I'm listening to investment strategists who are indicating that it's even possible that the Fed interest rates will be front-end loaded. So I'm optimistic that we'll be seeing continuing opportunities to increase earnings on the ARPA funds. But you'll hear more at the next meeting.
You mean, that's more like in terms of interest rate?
Well, we'll have a proposal, but I want to keep abreast of how great, if they, as expected, continue to rise, we may make choices about where to put those funds in the future.
Okay.
Even before the end of the next fiscal year.
Have a motion to accept the treasurer's? I move that we accept the treasurer's report. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All right, good. We're done. No miscellaneous. Don't even mention miscellaneous. As the miscellaneous queen right there. No old business? No old business either.
Do we want to mention anyone, Clyde?
About what?
Oh.
About what? Oh. Jen, anything you want to say, Clyde? The floor is yours.
I want to thank you for being so solid that I got there. I wanted to know, right after the last meeting, we had, Sue, I gave you an honor to the family. I was there several days, getting this reorganization for six days. I'm old, but I'm not dating on there six days. And I appreciate you letting me go on loan. And the chair, we have, it's helping out, I really appreciate it. And I'll be in touch with somebody at this time. But I am going to have my resignation in a few hours. Thank you so much. I should have to tell you, it's a break. I'm sorry, I wanted to finish it. And I'm going to be distressed and everything going on. Too late for this. I get a hack problem. Terry, I know it is. I have had a real terrible day, so I'd rather be there again. So thank you very much for the follow-up. And I wouldn't miss it, everybody. And I'd love to allow some of that.
It's been a pleasure serving with you, Clyde. Take care. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. I move that we adjourn. I'll second that. Okay. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye, take care.